Coming back, eighty percent of them are closed. So as the mayor said, we're going to only have a million and three for the rest of the year. And I think that we have got to do what she says, which is to take all matters to protect the direct financial benefits of the residents. And we should not be getting into our reserves until we absolutely have to, and we've done everything we can do to get lean and mean. And that was her second point. And I think we need to look at these projections and figure out how we can do something about the shopping center that might be the quickest and the best answer. And that's going to take a lot of consultation with the manager and owners of the property, but it's in everybody's best interest to do that. And there are ideas that are already being, if not already implemented, being implemented across the country, such as the Muir project here up in the old airport property. It has been turned into two floors, and you could do two, three, four, whatever we choose, of expensive and esteemed condos that would bring a lot of rent and taxes and so forth with shopping center on the bottom, such as the city along South Congress, north of 290. The Muir project is very successful. The domain is successful. People are crowding in there, but they're not really crowding into strip centers anymore. And coming out of this, we have two gorillas in the room. One is Amazon and one is Walmart. And Walmart is gearing up to take on Amazon. Amazon only has eighteen percent of the business that Walmart does, and that includes both retail stores and services, but more importantly, the internet. I have been ordering on the internet during this time, and it's amazing how much faster Walmart is shipping, even though on Prime than Amazon is. They're overwhelmed. And Walmart is filling up huge warehouses all over the country where stuff's stacked thirty and forty feet high to deliver it the next day or within two days, and you don't have to pay for Prime. And their inventory of materials is three to four times what it is on Amazon right now. And when we come out of this, they're going to be roaring. And I don't see how in the world most of the shops, particularly the small ones, will be able to come back. Last, I would agree with Mark to say this is an excellent time to take action with surplus employees to get to where we need to be because they have quite an exceptional golden parachute from the federal government that is available to them with the extended unemployment. And we don't have the option of coming out of this being the same old place that we were. We have to get with the change, and we either get with the changes occurring in society right now, or we will be consumed by it. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Browning. Thank you. Liz Wright, you have the floor. Liz, it shows on my side that you have your own device self-muted, but you do have the floor if you want to speak.
Unmuted.
You, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Okay. I wasn't going to read this. I was going to have someone else read it because I didn't know that we could have someone else read our letters. But I sent this to all the council members this morning, so I'll read it. Council members and mayor, I'm writing to request that you all take the bull by the horns and make the necessary hard decisions that will impact us for years to come. I was glad to see the mayor's recommended budget cuts, so they could be discussed now. I ask each of you to support these and perhaps add to them. Our city needs to be proactive when it comes to decreasing our outgoing revenue rather than a wait-and-see approach. We might have, we might have the necessary reserves in place today, but I can assure you, we will not have them in six months. Many of our retailers will not reopen at all. Getting new retailers has already proven to be an issue even before COVID-19. You are our elected officials, you, I'm sorry, you as our elected officials need to take the first steps in making recommendations regarding budget cuts in an expedient manner. These are unprecedented times, and meeting after meeting is not an efficient way to address these concerns. Cutting now does not, does not, sorry, cutting now does not mean the, cutting now, now, sorry, does mean that the nonessential items cannot be readdressed once we have a better understanding of where the city falls financially. I'm a bookkeeper by trade, and my client started asking me weeks ago, what can we cut? I recommend that we do the same now. Please look at the list as if it were your budget, no names, no faces, just the numbers. What would you cut? Thank you for, thank you, and I hope you and your family stay safe. Liz Wright, 22 Rees Drive.
Thank you, Liz. Clayton Stice, I see that you still are acknowledging that you would like to speak if you want to at this point. You have the floor.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now, yes.
Ah, great. Hopefully, I won't take that much time. My thought is, I agree with Liz's comments that the council needs to take some direct action on some hard choices. My suggestion would be that as near as I can tell, everyone, well, not everyone, there's been a lot of discussion recently that we need to have a lot more support on our city website. I would recommend that possibly one of the positions, instead of being eliminated, that it be considered to be converted to a full-time web support person and offer perhaps some compensation or coverage for training fees. We have some good employees. They have a good work history with us. It's the old, good help is hard to find. So I would just recommend that we consider paying some retraining fees to develop or convert one of those positions that might otherwise be lost to someone who I think would be of great value to the city in the next probably two years in terms of being on the site, keeping our website very updated and timely. That's all I have, thanks.
Are there any other citizen comments at this time? If so, please raise your hand. Councilmember Elliott, do you have a resident comment that you wanted to read? Councilmember Elliott, you have the floor because you have your hand raised. Did you have a resident comment that you wanted to read into the record? And Mark, I see that your hand is raised. I'm going to give you the floor, but I would remind you that Councilmember Rosen Garden did read your comments into the record. You have the floor? Yes.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know because I got, because I got on late. If they were already read, then I'm fine. I have nothing more to say.
Great. Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any other residents who'd like to make a citizen comment right now? Or if there are residents that are on the call who would like to make a comment to an item that will be coming up later if they don't anticipate being on the call when we get to that item? Councilmember Elliott, you have the floor?
Yes, I had a, I'm sorry, lost connection then. I had a resident, Miles Fox, who was trying to get in and couldn't, but now he's asked me to read a letter. May I do that this time?
Yes, councilmember, you can read that in.
Okay. There with me while I bring it back up. I just received this. Spring 2020, we will never forget this time. The financial challenges of COVID-19 to Sunset Valley are not fully known. Let's look at it two ways. Our revenue, how many more months of shuttered shops will we have? Who will reopen and who will not? What customers return having almost their every met through internet ordering and delivery? Our neighbors, how many neighbors in Sunset Valley have been dealt a heavy financial blow, lost their jobs, or seen decreased wages gasp as their retirements shriveled up? What we do know before COVID-19, for the coronavirus, we already had an estimation that our shopping centers were heading toward decline, that they have no footing to withstand the internet onslaught. Now, of course, it will be worse. Last year, I asked council to consider increasing the reserve target in case of unforeseen challenges. I was thinking drought, fire, and flood. There was no movement to increase the reserve. Now we need structural changes, not just an increased reserve target. I fully support the introductory points in there, Rose's letter, opt the, I think it means put out to the community this week, but she does not go far enough. We need serious cuts, and that means we have to reduce the single largest expenditure, staff salaries and benefits. Agree with Sunset Valley resident Robert Browning, get with the changes in society or get left behind. Agree with Mark with his vision of a streamed, I think a streamed, assume streamlined down public works under management of administration. Agree with Liz Wright, make hard decisions, be proactive, cut, cut, cut.
Councilmember Elliott, was that the end of what you needed to read in?
Yes, yes. And that is it. That is from Miles Fox.
Thank you. Are there any other residents or councilmembers, if any of you have been sent additional information that's been requested to read into the record? If you would please raise your hand. And councilmembers, I do, just for the record, and I will present them to the city secretary to include in the record, we did also receive, I believe all of the councilmembers were sent a letter from Brandon Shackelford, Donnie Hurwitz, Joe Coisen, and Roger Edmondson, and all of them wrote letters that are similar to the sentiments that were just expressed from nine other residents. At this time, are there any additional? Yes, Sylvia?
I have a comment that just came in from Starr McAllister.
Yes, absolutely. Please read that in.
So Joan, I appreciate all of the good work you do on making Sunset Valley a place for us all to feel safe and keeping our city prosperous. We understand the challenges you and the council face, especially with the current state of affairs. We agree with the proposals outlined in the email below, but after the old city manager left, the city talked about making more personnel cuts and distributing the role of the city staff to the existing staff to save the budget dollars and condense jobs. We know it takes time to make changes, but we feel we need some more staff cuts and condensing in the future. That is just our two cents and wanting to make our thoughts known. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. And I'll make one last call if there are councilmembers that have received something. Again, the notes that I just recognized, I know that they were sent to the council members, but I didn't see that there was an express request from any of them to read the letters into the record. Last call before we move on to the next item. Okay, moving on to reports for the evening, starting with the mayor's report. As you will notice on the dashboard, I have added the current retail status tab, which I'm updating daily based on input that's provided to me from either staff or residents. And then I have also added a tab that outlines the information that was sent in my letter out to the community on Saturday, which I'm calling the Proposed COVID Budget Rescue Plan. I would be delighted to take that down, but I will not do so until council steps up and makes the decision to start actively making cuts to our budget. As we do make cuts, if there isn't a comprehensive plan that's made public to the community, I will maintain this spreadsheet and track, if we choose not to do a comprehensive plan and instead take small bites at a time, I will update this spreadsheet to reflect any cuts that are adopted by council. And for agenda planning, same reminder as always, councilmembers, please get your items into Sylvia as soon as possible so that backup can be prepared and polished in time for posting. The one question that I did want to pose while we had everybody in the room was for the town hall meeting. Are there any changes to how we want that to look, or is there any desire from any of the councilmembers to remove that from our planning agenda? And that question goes somewhat to Sylvia, too. Have you heard any feedback from any of the councilmembers as to what we want to do with that meeting?
No, but I see Karen has her hand up.
Councilmember Medikas, you do have the floor now.
Oh, thank you, mayor. I think in light of what we have in front of us and dealing with the crisis, we should postpone a town hall meeting until we have more information to share with the community.
Okay. Are there any councilmembers that would disagree with that sentiment? Then for now, I will remove that, which of course doesn't limit us from having a town hall at any point, but my preference would be that if we're going to have a town hall, that we have a clear idea of what we need to discuss in light of the current city situation. So thank you, Councilmember Medikas. Any other comments on any of the information on the mayor's dashboard or for the agenda planning from either the community or councilmembers? Dr. Browning, you have the floor?
Yes, I'm sorry. I could not get my hands up to come back, but I just wanted to say that I'm concerned about trying to train employees as desperate as we are right now. We would still be paying the benefits and so forth, and we could get a contractor to do this as needed on particularly something like the webpage. And we should consider contractors for other things if we get to where we have a specific need that needs addressing, and we won't have to pay benefits to them, and it would be very cost efficient, I would think.
And with that, Sylvia, would you like to take over and lead the staff and committee reports for this evening?
Yes, we have staff online, so I will unmute them as we get to their reports. The first committee report is obviously my administration report, and while it feels like it's thin, trust me, it is anything but. CHASCO will begin work next week. I have asked that they give me their plan in following all of the city's COVID order and make sure that it follows the governor's order as well to not just protect themselves, but also our staff and those who come in contact with them. We have been working furiously on the various budget scenarios. I don't know how much the community is aware that during emergent situations, staff takes on completely different roles, and today's role is no different. We have public works supporting PD. We've got staff on the weekends manning the phones. We have foot patrols in our shopping centers. We have constant communication with our business community, and so things are not, things are not as normal. But we are still trying to, obviously, there are still things that need to happen. Bills need to be paid, agendas planned, all of the normal legislative functions. So the report might seem thin, but it is anything but. We do have a daily situational brief. Well, we have several. The chief has one, the mayor and I have one, and then as needed, we are called in to governor's calls to make sure that we are sharing adequate information. I will tell you that today UT released a new medical report on flattening the curve, and I expect that we will have a governor's conference at some point later in the week to talk about a potential extension of our stay-at-home order. That's going to be published tonight in our bulletin. You'll be able to click the link and be able to see that through. Those nightly bulletins are just that. They're information that we receive on a daily basis, and I know sometimes it may feel like information overload, but we want to make sure you have the most up-to-date information that we have because we understand you have to plan your businesses, you have to plan your life, and you have to be able to still continue, and the city plays a role in that. As we talk about budget planning for the future, coming from an emergency operations background, I want us to get used to saying the word resiliency. Resiliency and elasticity in our budget, in our operations, not only how fast we're able to bounce back, but how elastic we are in our planning so that we can contract and expand as needed. So those are, those are things as we begin our budget planning process, we're going to begin talking about. I am going to turn it over now to Carolyn, who is going to give the public works report.
And Carolyn, just before you start on the public works report, to dovetail with what Sylvia just said, the chief, Sylvia and I sometimes are getting different information at different times, so the other updates that I would add that will make an appearance on either tonight or the next daily bulletin, we will begin providing instructions on how residents can view COVID. Sorry. Trails and green space will also be closed in City of Austin, so that announcement, I don't know if they've made it in an official capacity, but there will be a complete closure on Easter weekend for trails and green space. Unless it is recommended by the chief that we do that in our city, I don't foresee that we will be doing that. So that question was presented to me from a resident today. So for Easter weekend, unless the chief advises otherwise, our trails and green space will stay open for residents to be able to use them, although I would caution people who use the Violet Crown Trail that the Violet Crown is a privately managed trail, and so they may be closing. They did announce it through their social media today that they will be closing portions of their trail out of respect for the City of Austin's request. And we will, in one of the upcoming bulletins, show residents how they can look to see if there have been employee cases of COVID in either our local HEB or our local central market. Carolyn, do you want to start with your report now?
Sure. Good evening, mayor and council. We are, as Sylvia said, kind of filling in a lot of different things in the city, doing a lot of just making sure that everything is taken care of on the streets and checking in with the businesses and shopping centers, doing some more trail inspections as we go around. So we've run into a few people on the trails, but not a lot of people when we've been out on these trails inspections, so I would just open it up if anybody had any questions. And I can say that the Violet Crown Trail, I got an email from George Kofler, the Violet Crown Trail will be closed this weekend.
Councilmember Rosen Garden, you have the floor?
I see that Clean Image has already withdrawn from supplying janitorial services and that we are month-to-month with the previous contractor. Are we going back out for a new RFP, or are we considering continuing with this one? And the second question, are we at the previous bid contract with the previous janitor or the new bid?
Councilmember Rosen Garden, we are on a month-to-month at the new bid rates because everything is on the table subject to cuts. We do not want to enter into a contract at this particular moment in time. There was an issue as to why Clean Image couldn't continue. I want to, you know, assure the council that had nothing to do with staff. Clean Image advised us that, one, they couldn't turn over their background reports, and, two, they could not keep up with the business. So that's the reason why. And our prior contractor is on a month-to-month until such time as we make a decision from a budgetary standpoint if we're going to have the resources to continue.
Do you have any additional questions at this time that relate to the city administrator's report or to the public works department? Councilmember Rosen Garden?
Continuing with the janitorial services, if we have less staff at the janitorial, they have less work to do. And if we do move more of everybody into one building or at least two buildings, they even have less to do, and we could cut that expense in half.
Sylvia, do you want to?
No, that's, again, everything is on the table, so I wouldn't want us to enter into any long-term contracts at this particular point in time. But yes, Councilmember Rosen Garden, all of those things are up for review.
And is Chief Carter in the room to provide the? Yes. Chief Carter, if you are ready, you have the floor if you'd like to give the public safety report? And it looks like you might have your, I just sent you a, looks like you're self-muted, Chief Carter. There you go. We can hear you now.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'll just kind of reiterate what Sylvia said. My report, it looks like there's not a lot of information in it, but we have been very busy here wearing multiple hats. We've had a lot of inquiries from residents about how things are going and, you know, how we're doing. I just want to say that we've had no major incidents here in the city. In fact, it looks like, especially our residents, have been on their best behavior. We haven't had to respond to calls to any residents for anything, you know, unusual. That's enabling us to spend our time where the people are right now, which is in the shopping centers. And even that, even with that, we haven't really had too many incidents that have, you know, been any more unusual than a normal working day or anything. We've had a lot of people call to check on us, and I want to say that unlike some other police departments, all of our officers have been healthy. We haven't had anyone sick or anything like that, and we're doing all we can to stay healthy, and I want the residents to know that they're in good hands and we're still here. You may not, you know, on some of the calls, we don't respond to minor nature calls anymore, but we are here, and I just want to kind of reassure them that we are patrolling and looking out for them.
Thank you, chief. Do councilmembers, do we have any questions from the council for Chief Carter or for any of the other administrative updates this evening before we move on to our next item? We are now at our next item, which is item number four, council consideration of agenda items for approval and consent. We have three items that are eligible. Councilmembers, if you would like to make a motion, if you please raise your hand. Councilmember Rosen Garden, you have the floor?
I move that we approve agenda item number five, meeting minutes of 3:24 and 3:30. Agenda item number six with Beaumont changed to Sunset Valley, line 27. Item number 10 with corrections, six AEDs and one cabinet.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosen Garden. We have a motion to approve on consent with the edits mentioned by Councilmember Rosen Garden, and the motion is to approve on consent, items number five, items number six, items number 10. And do we have a second from a councilmember? If you would please raise your hand, and I will acknowledge you to second the item. Councilmember Reed, you have the floor?
I second the motion.
Thank you. And do the motion maker or the second have anything that they'd like to add? And if there are any councilmembers who would like to remove or make any suggestions to this motion, if you please raise your hand at this time, or if you want to add any comments or remove one of the three items. And just as a refresher for how we will do this, when I call for the vote, if you would please use the chat feature to submit your vote. That ensures that it gets documented, and then to, for, just to ensure in case somebody can't use the chat feature, Sylvia will then read the vote into the record so that it is also audible to everybody who is in attendance to the meeting. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. And Sylvia, once you have a vote And Sylvia, once you have a vote from everybody, if you would please read it back to us.
Councilmember Medicus, yes. Councilmember Gonzalez, yes. Councilmember Ellett, yes. Councilmember Rosengarden, yes. Councilmember Reitz, yes.
Thank you. And so that is a unanimous vote. Motion passes. That brings us now to, oh, sorry, let me read those out just so that it's clear for the record. We approved on consent items number five, approval of the minutes from the March 24th, 2020 regular meeting and the March 30th, 2020 called meeting. Item number six, approval of a resolution to deny the rate change application proposed by Texas Gas Service. And item number 10, discuss and consider purchase of automatic external defibrillators known as AEDs using crime control and prevention district funds. That now brings us to item number seven. Presentation of budget issues and seek direction from council on potential action to include reduction or elimination of programs and other expenses as related to reduced revenue projections resulting from COVID-19. And I do believe that Sylvia has the presentation that was included in the backup available. And we will allow her to start this evening with a summary of that presentation.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good evening, actually. Obviously, we are in unprecedented times right now. I was on the phone today with 120 city managers and city administrators across the country. And we are all sort of scratching our heads, trying to, to get our arms around what we believe may be the, the turning point, the down slope, our forecasting, our normal forecasting measures are not what we're incorporating into our forecasting measures today. So I just want everybody to remember this is quite a fluid situation with things changing daily. So first, I talked a little bit about our COVID-19 dashboard. Let me, I'm going to zoom this in a little bit more. The, the dashboard that is part of our Open Gov feature has important documents linked into it. It has our daily bulletin. And it also has some important features, such as where you can find a local health clinic, what you can do for help. We will be adding some additional resources for our small businesses, specifically links on resources that are becoming available daily from a variety of federal and state agencies on how we can help them continue to keep their doors open, albeit most of them have told us they're in a severely reduced revenue state. We are currently operating under several orders. We have the state of Texas order that was issued March 31st that we are still in place with. Again, I anticipate the governor to have another press conference this week to give us an update as the medical professionals continue to make projections as to when we think this thing is going to start leveling out. We also have the Travis County order and then also the City of Sunset Valley order. I did also put after various questions, the Attorney General's response to open meeting rules and partial suspension. That does not mean we don't have to notice. That does not mean we don't have to attempt to have a meeting. It lays some groundwork for two way communication and it lays some emergent rules in case we needed to put some items on an agenda in an emergency situation. So at the time of printing, 62 of 114 retail restaurants were closed. That's 54%. That number has climbed. I believe today it is 70. Of the folks that remain open, our hotel, for example, has told us that they're operating at 5% capacity. Our restaurants have told us they have more than 60% reduction in revenue, even doing curbside, online, DoorDash and the variety of other services that are available. Our service related, which are partially medical, also have reduced hours as they are also doing their best to protect their staff. Many of our retail partners are, our landlords, our managers in the retail sector have told us that they are handling it on a case by case basis. There's, there's no magic bullet that's going to help every single retailer in our centers. And we are doing what we can, how we can, as fast as we can for them. And that is helping them determine which is the best way in and out. You know, we'll sit with chief and, and see if there's any traffic pattern that can help them get their curbside going. We're not coming down with the hammer on any signs that show that there's curbside or delivery or those other options available. And we truly are encouraging even our staff to, to shop local to help our businesses stay open. And I would encourage our residents to do the same. Current revenue streams affected by sales tax. And this is, these are just rounded numbers as Regina and I continue to, to, to be fluid and try to explain things in probably as simple a manner as possible. The vast majority is into the general fund. We do have crime control funds. The street tax and the green tax are all affected by our reduction in sales tax. It's not insular to the general fund, although the general fund is the workhorse within the organization. And so that one feels the greatest brunt of any reduction. So monthly revenue projections against all funds, the adopted budget has that at $553,000. Revenue projections are 60 days in arrears, meaning what we receive in March is our January number. That's what makes the situation so difficult to get our arms around because there is a delay in reporting. In addition, the comptroller's office has relaxed some of the reporting requirements for some of our businesses. So we may be 60 and 90 days before we're actually beginning to see the real numbers of what April, of what March and April have looked like. If we are projecting an 80% decrease. And again, that 80% is because more than half of our retailers are closed and the ones that are open are reporting such a significant impact in revenue. We have projected an 80% decrease, which for the general fund alone, that's $84,000 a month. That is a dramatic decrease. And that's $210,000 for all revenue accounts. So obviously that puts us in a monthly deficit position. And, you know, from the perspective of balancing the budget, non online balancing your own household budget, you know, what, what do we need to reduce? What do we need to halt, suspend? And at some point, is there determination to dip into reserves? And if we do, for how long? And, and how much is the tolerance level for that drawdown? Obviously salaries, we're going to reduce as necessary. We have a vacant position that's been frozen. The temporary positions have been frozen out of the budget or eliminated for the rest of this budget year as well. And so any, any further discussions for that will be at the council and at the committee level. The general fund has quite a bit of dollars into it for projects. It was over 320 that was budgeted. We have expended some of that money, but there's a vast chunk that is still in there. So the determination of what projects need to come to a halt, need to be suspended. And I've, I've been talking about a reset. I don't ever believe in zero based budgeting. Well, let me, let me comment to that. I never believed in zero based budgeting, but I'm going to tell you that all of my city manager colleagues know that this year we're going to be building a budget based on the ground up. Because again, none of us have ever been in a situation like this. Even post 9/11, we weren't seeing what we're seeing today. So just to give a revenue comparison on a side by side, we're, we're going from $533,000 a month to $110,000 a month. That, that's our best estimate. And again, that's fluid. I will tell you up until, in the next day or so, we will receive our check that's 60 days in arrears. And that check, we've calculated, we will have received 53% of what we should have received by this point in time. We should be 50%. So we have about 3% of playroom, but obviously that's not enough. It would have been great to have an astronomical December and, you know, have a little bit more wiggle room. But you can see the significant impact to each one of those funds. So our general fund reserves are 5.1 million in the bank. If we have, our current operating budget is $425,000 a month. If we bear down to absolutely minimal operation costs, which includes taking out any of those projects, taking out anything other than what we're contractually obligated to provide and salaries, then we are at $322,000 a month. If we stay at our current operational spend and cut nothing and have our revenues continue at 80% for the next six months, then we would be drawing down reserves approximately $314,000 a month. If we reduce minimal to minimal operating costs, we would be drawing down reserves approximately $211,000 a month. So some of the proposed reductions. I told you that we've been preemptive and we froze the vacant position and we eliminated the temporary position. There's been discussion about potential reduction to benefits. Right now, our employees receive 100% of our healthcare paid. The potential to have the employees pay 10, 20, whatever percentage that is for the remainder of the year and then take a harder look when we redo our benefits in January. Subsidies is something that's thrown out all the time. We have a variety. We have library cards and all of those other programs and subsidies that are part of that. And then in the program piece, eliminating all non essential programs. And there's been a discussion that non essential is defined as not health or safety related. I don't have a definition of essential and non essential, but from the day to day operations, I can tell you we're required to provide water, sewer, trash, public safety, animal control and the things that, you know, are, are health and safety related. Projects, elimination of all non essential projects. These are what I'm considering we haven't expended engineering monies on and/or if we don't do them, we would face catastrophe in some other way. For example, if we had a major roof leak or a major HVAC leak, I would say we need to continue with that project simply because to not do it would cause more harm than good. So the mayor also went through, she went through the entire budget and listed some proposed reductions. We're going through that list. Some of those are, can be done in this budget cycle. Some of them can be done in the next budget cycle and in the future. And I think that was the basis to begin the conversation of some very difficult reductions before we get into really the meat and the muscle of the organization. Next is using other resources in general fund reserves. So we have the potential to allocate some other resources, staffing resources into some of the other funds that would require a change in staff duties, that would require a change in staff definition to make sure it matches with what the fund was intended to do. Also redefining uses of restricted funds. Where, where are some of those pots that we have restricted and or encumbered that we may be able to release and relieve the general fund? And then any adjustments to staff time? If we need to make some reductions to three quarter time, et cetera, to further reduce our employment expense. Reprogramming of any funds. We have a lot of little pots, which are, there's not a lot of money, but there's about 30,000 of projects that haven't been closed out that can be reallocated. That's a given. We're going to start going through that and releasing those funds in a report to the council. Again, the use of reserves. And then some discussion about perhaps reprogramming the hot funds. If we get into a position where we are needing some operating funds to run City Hall, for example, reconfiguring City Hall a little bit to create a welcome center would allow us to be able to use some hot funds into that operation. So I will open it up. I will give it back to the mayor and you can open it up to questions in council direction.
Thank you, Sylvia. And so to start with, just so everybody knows how we're going to do this, we're not going to move to citizen comments until we first make sure that all of the council members have had a chance to have their questions about the presentation answered. And so I will start with Councilmember Gonzalez. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think that one of the things that was sort of clear to me was that this was the mayor's work and I certainly appreciate her efforts. But I was concerned because some of the data was clearly put together rather rapidly and isn't accurate in terms of, you know, where we are right now. They're, they're whole year numbers. And when we, so, so I think that what I would really like is to have the staff definition of cuts and where we are with accurate numbers from this year so that we can talk about those categories of things. I am opposed to cutting staff healthcare at this time when our people are essentially being first responders. And the one time that they really, really need healthcare is now. It is unconscionable to me to be cutting staff healthcare when, when we need it most. I, I don't think the savings warrant it. And there are so many other places that we can do things. I have a long list of things. I'm just going to start with that. I am in favor of, of getting down to essential costs. And I think I'd like to see that defined. We have so many things like subsidies, the wastewater subsidy. When we take the, the list that the, that the mayor presented, even though those are whole year figures, that amount compared to the wastewater subsidy is, is, is less. So those are things that we really need to look at. On top of subsidies are what that came in last and we had so much money that we didn't know what to do with. That is the stuff that, that is really high on my list of, of things that we need to look at. Let's see. I'd like to get accurate sales tax estimates. When we look at the figures, if they are accurate, that, that, that we're going for essential services, I agree with Cherry Cowan. We have time to look at this in a very thoughtful manner. We have, if we, if we do the math and we, and we consider this math accurate, we can go for 24 months on our reserve with, with the essential services. So while we obviously don't want to do that, we don't have to be rash. We can take time to have people be really thoughtful and, and do good analysis. And that is when we don't even consider that we basically have a double reserve when you talk about CIP and repair and replacement funds that we can, that we can tap into. So we are in a place where we can think rather than react. And I think that's really important. I would like to have read into the record how much we have in the CIP and repair and replacement funds, which are ways that we can reallocate. And I think people need to know those kinds of things because I didn't really see that accurately put out there. So yes, I really want to hear from the department heads about making cuts to essential services. I want to know which projects they think are good for putting on the shelf. And I'd like to see that list put out. And I'd like to see that list, which I asked for, which I asked for, which I thought I was asking for when I asked this, got sent to finance a couple of council meetings ago. I was really hoping that those were the kinds of things that would go to finance, that they would have that in their hands when they had their meeting. Next. So a list of, of critical items from Public Works that we can cut, that we have to keep and that we, that we can cut. All of the community events, I'm in favor of cutting the youth program. Those things, all, we can't even operate that. So I'm appreciative that we're putting the CARES Act information for our local businesses. There are also other things that I, I see some of my friends who are in the businesses taking advantage of. And the more we can get that out to our businesses, the better. That would be really fabulous to, to keep adding that. I'm grateful we're putting it up on our website. The City of Austin has a small business program that they're reaching out for. I know this is a former small business owner. They haven't gotten back to me enough times because I've been trying to see what they're doing. But it would be good to, to research that. And, and also just available grants for small businesses. Let's see. I think one of the things that I was talking about with Councilmember Medicus, and she's, she's even more versed in this than I am, but since I'm talking first, I'll go ahead and go for that. The, the difference between the crisis and the recovery. And that we, that we can look at this as a crisis, but that we also need to look at it as the recovery and when we're going to hit one stage to the other. And we don't want to gut our staff so that we don't have good people there for when we hit the recovery. And so that's why I think we need to do this in a thoughtful manner so that we, we can make a decision every week if we need to. I, I am all for essential services only right now. But in terms of layoffs, I would really like to see what we need before we fire and, and, and let go people. That, that is very, very strongly where I am. I really like the idea of diversification of revenue streams. And the gasoline costs are significantly lower. Almost all those things in the budget can probably be halved. And I appreciate everybody's efforts. All the people who are writing letters, all the people who are caring and being supportive and how wonderful people's attitudes are to be in this together. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Rosengarden, you have the floor.
I agree with Melissa on the fact of the
I agree with Melissa on the fact of the mayor's suggestions. We're already six months into the year, so you need to cut that in half. The 407,000 that she said, 407, yeah, 407,027.91 that she said we could save is actually 203,000 because we're already past six months. The other thing I would look at is when private industry is freezing salaries, reducing salaries even to 75%, reducing hours worked and laying off. Another thing we could consider doing in Public Works, we could take those employees, get with a temporary agency and have those employees sign up with a temp agency and thus we only use them as needed. And thus we immediately decrease our salary base in Public Works dramatically. Let's see, what else? If we laid off at least three people within the Public Works area, that would help us dramatically also. So, and previously I saw that Public Works had 10 employees, four bosses and five techs and one admin assistant. And admin had six people. So basically look at those numbers and see who could work at a temp agency, which is better, working at a temp agency and still have a job, still be related to the city or being laid off and get workers comp and still have some money. So both of them, they would still have some money, but which one would help the city the best way? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosengarden. And while I'm waiting for the next, I'm sure we'll have another council member. Yes, we have other councilmembers. I'd like to point out, just since it's been brought up twice, if you look at the top of the proposals I made, I made a clear disclaimer on there that these are approximations based on the current approved budget. The idea that I would have would be in part that councilmembers would, one, be responsive to residents who've written in and two, send a clear message to all of us. Us, personnel, outside world, residents, that we do understand that our revenue streams have actually been affected. So I've heard things such as there's no hurry. We have a cushion. But as Sylvia pointed out in her presentation, the fact that we don't get our tax numbers until 60 or now potentially longer than that out doesn't change the reality, which is in March, our revenue stream, compared to what we projected when we adopted our budget, it was affected. It has been affected. We are currently making less money, taking in less revenue than we predicted. What I would hope happens at some point tonight, whether it's the list that I put forward or not, I would hope that council make a motion at some point this evening to cut items from the budget and then allow staff to come back and report and say, okay, based on the cuts that you made from the budget, those things have now been amended and removed from the current budget. And based on removing them, here is what the actual accounting is based on what's been used up to date or where there are restrictions. So some things we may make the decision to eliminate them, but there may be a contractual restriction or there may be some under other restriction that minimizes what we're allowed to reduce from them. But it doesn't change the fact that councilmembers can start acting this evening and say, let's start cutting what I have been calling for two weeks now, cut the low-hanging fruit. We have a lot. I made a very small list. That list actually could be much longer. And I'm going to go to the councilmembers who haven't spoken and then come back to the ones that have already spoken. Councilmember Reitz, you have the floor.
So when I looked at the projections, if we do nothing, we are basically, at the end of this fiscal year, we would be down to like 8.4 months of our reserve. So while I understand that, yes, we do have a healthy reserve, I do think that it is better that we act sooner rather than later. I think the sooner we respond, the less drastic it will be because if we wait to respond, I think it will be very drastic and very painful. So the more we can be proactive and start with this, I think we will be better off. I mean, I think we have to look at the mayor's, all of these ideas from the mayor's. I think those were good ideas. I would like to get better numbers on those. If it's just 200, that's, we need a lot more. On the right side of her page, she had other reductions. I think we need to look at that. Unfortunately, many of them are in restricted funds such as the street fund. And that's a healthy fund that it would take some creativity to be able to redirect some of those funds. So I'd be interested if there was a way to do that, but I'm not sure there is. So I do think we need to make some very drastic cuts. I do think that we do need to look at our, our salary budget. We spend 2.5 million in salaries. And that's a tough one to change with all the salaries and benefits. And as our revenues go down, that remains constant without any change. So we do need to look at that and look at areas that make sense where we can contract out and still provide essential services. So I would want to look at that. I think that's, I think again, I want to reiterate, I think we need to move sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protan. Councilmember Medicus, you have the floor. And it looks like you might be, yeah, we can hear you now.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I agree that we should suspend all non-essential expenses ASAP and any programs or repairs that are not essential, that we hold off on those until we get through the recovery process on this. I also think it's really important for us as leaders to be calm and to understand that we are in a disaster and there is a process for handling disasters. And that involves mitigation, so making sure that you don't have a loss of life. We do have the city reserve preparedness, making sure people know how to be safe and putting out the educational material on that and what we can do to support our businesses that are open. And response, which is where we are now in the, in making sure that the essentials are covered for people, food, water, health and safety. And we need, what I believe we need to do, if, I mean, this is the National Incident Command System. It's not a new thing. This is how disasters are handled. And we need to do a damage assessment and get really good numbers and accurate financial data to make informed decisions and also to figure out business reentry into the marketplace. So perhaps we look at, as we're in the response mode, we start to look at the business recovery program and maybe we establish a business recovery team to really focus on this. And then disaster recovery is a plan that we need to really put in place now. We need to start working on that and update it as current information is available. And we need to look at six to 18 months for recovery. We will come out on the other side of this. This is a disaster, all storms passed. So we just have to figure out how to make this work and keep our city as viable and healthy. I do think that one of our most valuable assets is our people. So while I do think that it may be that we have to change status of employment, I think we need to, before we actually take action on that, we need to look at what programs are essential. And then we need to determine how many staff we need to actually maintain those essential programs. And we need to budget for that. And we need to direct the city administrator to reassign duties and allocate staff to accomplish those ongoing operations. And I believe we need to really now look at the recovery plan and perhaps reassign some of our staff to working with the businesses on this business recovery team and really focus in that direction with some of our resources that we currently have. So those are the things that I think are really important. And, and I do agree, we do have to take action. We can't wait. But we need to have action strategies and tactics that will provide directions on our economic recovery priorities. And we need to, again, update those with current data on a regular basis. And we need to set measurable outcomes and a process for monitoring the progress. And the public and the residents and the businesses need to be aware of our planning efforts and how much time and resources and funds will be, how we're going to prioritize those things. So I think we need to stay calm. We need to take action. And we need to be very mindful of not just where we are right this minute, but where do we want to be at the end of the recovery period in, say, 12 to 18 months? Thank you.
And just so residents don't get annoyed thinking that I don't see your hands, I want to first make sure you certainly keep your hands up if you're a resident or from the media, but I want to make sure that all of our councilmembers have an opportunity to get all of their thoughts out before we move to resident comments. And again, I'm going to go through all the councilmembers who haven't spoken first and then I'll circle back around to those who've already spoken. Councilmember Ellett, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think there's been some very, very good points raised here. I am prepared to make a motion right now. And hopefully this motion will be seconded and will be open for discussion. In putting this motion together, which I submitted, or submitted to paper late this afternoon, I tried to take into consideration all of the various pieces of feedback I received either from telephone, emails and conversations, outward conversations I had with people whose opinions I trust, whether they be, you know, senior people in the leasing business, commercial leasing business, consultants when it came to retail. And let me just reflect on some of these things, what I'm hearing. I think if I condense what I hear tonight, that is a desire for council to be decisive. There is a desire for council to make cuts. There is a concern at what this looks like. And I think the answer, I believe, is we don't know what it looks like. It can last a long time. We can see a recovery and then go back into a dip. And we can see any permutation of that. Dr. Brown has said it, well, what the impact will be on our retail centers, we don't know. We can't even guess. And anybody I think who says they know what the impact is, are merely speculating. I, I know one thing, looking at these, what we've just seen, that we're going to have to draw down on our reserves. It is obvious. And I think the function of, the goal we should set ourselves is to minimize that drawdown. We don't know what will happen in the future. And the minimum we can draw down will leave, the more reserves will lead. Who would have thought, two years ago, three years ago, we would be faced with a pandemic that covers the world and impacts us in a very, very direct and personal manner such as this? We are a city that only has essentially one revenue source. I welcome the opportunity to go forward to look at additional resources, revenue streams that we can bring online. I note Councilmember Reitz's desire for quick action. And I agree. And I think we have to make some drastic cuts. I welcome Councilmember Rosengarden's that we should look at all things, including personnel costs. And I also agree with Councilmember Medicus that in many ways, the coming out phase of this will be more difficult to manage than the emergency process we're in at the moment. And I think we will have to strategize of what our plan will be. It will be varied. It will require the input of many, many different stakeholders and people who have substantial input and experiences, things of this nature. I do think we suits they can. But having said all that, I do think it's time to take decisive action. I would like to present a motion and hopefully this will get seconded and we can enter it up, enter into discussion. The motion, I printed out late this afternoon, sent it to Sylvia so we can see it on the screen. I'm happy to read through it. It looks complicated at the beginning, but after you've read it, you quickly realize it's four salient points in there. Let me go through it. The motion would be to number one, and all of this is part of the motion. There's five parts to adopt the Budget and Finance Committee's recommendation to define essential services as those services that are required for health and safety and move forward for providing those services until the COVID crisis is officially withdrawn by the mayor. In addition to that, number two, eliminate all budget allocations deemed non-essential from the fiscal 2019, 2020 as discussed this evening. And I believe that's an approximation of close to $410,000. Number three, direct the city administrator and the mayor to reduce personal expenses by 10 to 15%. Number four, direct the Budget and Finance Committee to remove the general fund, to review the general fund and provide a recommendation that where they think we should prioritize our cost savings along with estimated amounts for council to adopt. Number five, the report of all these completed actions be presented at the next regular council meeting with actual accounting and any additional action necessary to finalize these adjustments. I respectfully submit this motion. I'll look for a second so that we can discuss this.
Because I have other hands, both councilmembers and residents right now, councilmembers, if there's one of you that would like to second this motion to open it for discussion, would you please submit a second via chat? And if we receive one, I'll have Sylvia acknowledge that into the audible record. So councilmembers, if somebody would like to second, please indicate so in the chat room.
Councilmember Reitz, seconded?
We have a motion which is on the visual dashboard, so the city secretary doesn't have to try to transcribe it. The councilmember has submitted it in writing. It is on the board for anybody who is attending the meeting via web to view it so that you can see what was motioned. Councilmember Reitz has seconded that. And I'm going to give her the floor first since she seconded it. And then I will go to Councilmember Gonzalez and then Councilmember Rosengarden and then continue through with any other councilmembers. Councilmember Reitz, you have the floor.
Yes, I am happy to second that motion. And I welcome all the comments by other councilmembers and by all of our citizens. I think those are very helpful comments and there's some really good ideas in there. And I think we should look through those and really, really see what we can do. I think the 410,000 is a little low, particularly as Councilmember Rosengarden said, that may only be $200,000 by her estimation. So we do need to look for more opportunity in that area. And I would hope that the Budget and Finance Committee can provide some insight also to that along with the administration and the mayor to continue their job. And I also wanted to say thank you to the city administrator and the mayor. This was a tremendous amount of work that they put together in looking at what are possible ways. I think that it is important that we move, again, that we move quickly. I think this will get us started. I think if we do nothing, we will have a serious budget deficit, a reserve deficit, and we do need to move along with this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Reitz. And just to note for the record and also to acknowledge Chief Carter, I greatly appreciate he proactively submitted from his department today, an additional $65,000 in reductions from this year's budget. And similar to other items that were on my suggested list, those are items, some of which, once Ray Jean and Sylvia look at them, the 65,000 reduction might actually be less than that. And one of those items was already approved this evening, which was to reduce the AED budgeted amount from 16,000 to 8,000. So those items, I will make sure that those make it both to the Budget and Finance Committee this Thursday, that they get added to my list along with anything that isn't potentially approved this evening. And again, I just wanted to proactively thank the chief for going through his budget and finding $65,000 in cuts. Councilmember Gonzalez, you have the floor. Councilmember Gonzalez, you have the floor, but it looks like you might be self muted.
Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Ellett. I generally like this. I don't think that anyone who's spoken so far has disagreed that we need to act immediately. My friendly amendment would be to item number two. I really feel like that the budget allocations should be looked at through our professionals, which I don't think they've had a chance to. I believe the mayor did most of this. And I and I think that if we direct them to make an amount of cuts, because we are only at 2:30, that we don't have to necessarily say that they're the ones that were on the mayor's list. And I so I, because I do feel like we need to leave the healthcare in place. So that would be my friendly amendment is that we directed staff to look at at these budget allocations and see if they can get us to that total of say 410 or and greater. And I and I'm going to say that in subsidies and in the group meetings, there's there's significant ones. If you look at the wastewater where you do households at 3,000, 5,000, and 10,000, that's where where you you could double that amount and and need to for other reasons as well. In terms of the FEMA follow up, I really would like a friendly amendment of that added to this because that's another place we can save money because we'll be able to tap into federal funds if we do a good job of looking at and documenting that we have staff on the documentation and the reallocation of people to this work. Those are things that can be covered by federal dollars. I want to make sure we have documentation and staff on that right now, people who are being trained. But I really want to have respect for the staff input and respect for the finance input. We have professionals and I want to make sure that those people who really know the budget inside and out are giving us their best advice and that we're asking for it. So I totally agree that we, and I think everyone agrees, that we act immediately on what are defined as essential items. Thank you.
Councilmember Ellett, do you accept the friendly amendment as submitted by Councilmember Gonzalez? And I need to see you.
First of all, if I may, thank you for that friendly amendment. And I take it in the spirit and what it was intended. The answer is, I do believe I agree. I have one condition, not condition, one question, I think, for Sylvia on this. I'm all for getting the most accurate data from the most competent people. Can we do that in, and actually it also addresses Councilmember Gonzalez's belief as well. Can we do that in a timely fashion? And what is, what is, what would be the process of getting that data, getting that input? How long would it take? That's the only question I have.
In regards to item number two?
Yeah, as to the friendly amendment that Councilmember Gonzalez raised.
We have started working on that item and it is a topic for Budget and Finance on Thursday, I believe.
And Councilmember Ellett, accord, it looks like in your, based on your motion, depending on what cuts you approve tonight, part of what would be coming back at the next council meeting would be that actual accounting. So it would be based on any additional input from Budget and Finance. But more importantly, Ray Jean and Sylvia is saying, based on what you all cut, this is what the actual accounting of that looks like. And to be clear, although yes, I am the person who went through our approved budget line by line twice over the last five days. This list was not published or made public until after Sylvia had sufficient time to look at it and to confirm with me if there was anything that I had put on the left side that might be essential or that shouldn't be cut, and to ensure that the things on the right side also are not things that would be irrational or illogical for either committee or public to look at cutting in the near future. So when we talk about having staff input, although I did make the list, it was absolutely 100% reviewed by both police chief and the city administrator. Councilmember Rosengarden, you have the floor?
First off, I want to say, Mayor and City Administrator Sylvia, thank you for all your work. Sometimes I'm slow to give the compliments. So thank you, because I know this took a lot of time, a lot of detail. And Phil, Councilmember Ellett, thank you so much for putting your motion in writing. It really helped to get all the details. Very good. But you know, number two does need to be changed and modified there, but excellent in what you did in putting it in writing. There are so many more things we can still look at and do. As Sylvia had mentioned, we can put some of the staff salaries into different funds. So and we could, we could do, for instance, any public works, work that is done, repair and replacement, we could put it in there. Every time we move something out of the general fund into a different fund, we are freeing up money in the general fund that runs the city, pays the utilities, keeps the computers working, keeps us being able to do these meetings, etc., keeps the lights on. And of course, when I mentioned earlier about reductions or layoffs, I was not considering the police department. So we need our police more than ever through these terrible times. Thank you.
And Councilmember Ellett, you do still have the floor, and I didn't get a clear answer. Councilmember Gonzalez submitted two friendly amendments and I'm not, did you accept one, both, or neither?
At this stage, I would not not accept them. I understand the spirit of it and I I agree with that. But I do think in light of the clarification you've given in terms of the the work that you and the city administrator has gone through, I trust you. I trust the work that's gone into that. I'd like to stand as is. And I'm, I would ask the Councilmember Reitz to second on that as well. But at this stage, I think this takes care, hopefully, of all of the concerns we have there. And if we find out we save more money than the 410,000, I think that's a wonderful thing. And we should, to Councilmembers Gonzalez, apply for any relief we get from any, any agency, whether it be FEMA or whatever. I think we should be pursuing that with vigor.
Councilmember Amedicus, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to all of the staff, Mayor, and all the council members. I believe we're all in agreement that we need to take decisive action and quickly. And thank you, Phil. This is helpful, having this in writing. I appreciate that, Councilmember Ellett. Just a couple of things. In number one, I just want to make sure that the services that are required for health and safety and providing those services, and then any contractual obligations that we currently have. Are we going to be taking that into consideration? And on number two, the budget as discussed this evening and presented herein is actually an annual number. So I would really like, if that's, if we're just saying we want them to discuss coming up with $410,000 in cuts, then I think we say that to staff. But the 410 is really based on, the 407 is based on annual budget, not what's left in the current budget. So just have a concern about that.
Karen, while I have you on the floor, so the way, because I'm reading this, and the way that I read it is that it's the line items being eliminated through number two and that number five requires that a proper accounting based on those eliminations for actual funds spent to date be reported back in two weeks. Are you wanting to qualify that further?
Just want to make sure that's clear. And I like the terminology, since we are in disaster mode, that we're suspending these items from the fiscal year budget.
Thank you. Councilmember Reitz, you have the floor?
Yes, I do want to basically second the Councilmember Ellett's where he stands with the motion, and I'm okay with that. I do think that I don't, the direction, I think, I'm sure most councilmembers will feel this way, is that they, direction to staff is not to be limited by the 410. If there are other things that are available to be cut, that, you know, that 410 is not a limiting number. So that's what my suggestion.
And does the motion maker agree with that sentiment, which we want to make sure to ensure that that's part of the motion? Is that the 410 is a starting point based on the information that's on the spreadsheet this evening, but that staff would not be limited in reporting back in two weeks for nonessential items? Is that the motion maker's intent?
Yes, absolutely.
Do we have any additional council members who wish to speak before we move to resident comments? And when we finish with resident comments, we will come back to council members before we take the vote this evening. Councilmember Rosengarden, you have the floor?
On item number three, where he suggests that we reduce personnel expenses by 10 to 15%, is that 10 to 15% for the total personnel, which would be, let me do a quick number, 24, 30, and that would be three personnel? Or are you saying only with public works and admin?
We have a question to the motion maker if the personnel count is meant to be general for the city administrator or if it's to be more specific. And I have both of you unmuted in case you need to qualify your question, Councilmember Rosengarden.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ellett?
The answer, it's in general, Councilmember Rosengarden. I think that's the amount that I want to set. I think that gives the staff, the mayor and the city administrator some flexibility. And I'm not one to micromanage this. I'm total confidence in what they they will affect. And so I would say that's an overall and it covers all departments.
Councilmember Rosengarden, does that sufficiently answer your question?
Yes, if you do it just with public works and admin, you get 1.6 personnel off, which is but if you do it all of the staff, you have up to three people that could be laid off.
Councilmember Reitz, do you want to add anything before I move? Councilmember Rose, their hand raised?
Yes, I, yes.
I'll come back to you, Councilmember Rosengarden. Sorry.
I'm sorry, am I up?
You do. You have, we had, we had two people, multiple people trying to talk. So yes, Councilmember Reitz, you have the floor, and then we'll take it back to Councilmember Rosengarden and then Councilmember Amedicus.
Yes, I think this is looking at our total salary budget of 2.5 million. It is 10 to 15% of the total salary budget. I do believe most of those, the focus will be on the administration and public works, possibly other areas. But that should be the, I would think that will be the primary focus. But I do want to say it is total budget of 2.5 million that we spend on salaries versus number of people.
Thank you, Councilmember Reitz. Councilmember Rosengarden, I'm sorry, I believe you were trying to say something.
That's all right. I was going to continue with simply, you know, reading the statement again, reduce personnel expenses. So whether it's layoffs or other expenses like reduction in pay and reduction in hours worked, that could also be considered. I do want to remind everybody that in the Budget and Finance Committee, we for years have always prepared the recommendations to the mayor for the mayor's budget as though we were worried a tornado was going to come. And so we were constantly considering that and putting reserves aside. And just before this happened, we were talking about increasing the reserves and changing the policy once again to where we would increase beyond 12 months. So just so you know, we on finance for years have been constantly talking about what if the worst was to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Amedicus, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say too that I don't want to inhibit creativity either in the Budget or Finance Committee or the staff with ideas that they could come up with. I think we need to be creative and we need to be resourceful, flexible. And I'm open to hearing any and all ideas that will keep our city solvent and viable into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would add to that, that Terry Callen mentioned it this evening. He also mentioned it in the Budget and Finance Committee meeting last week. I think it would be great for the Budget and Finance Committee to focus any additional bandwidth on new revenue sources or creatively looking at city assets, any, any, any possibilities. Again, what they would be submitting to us would not be binding, but it would at least make it so that there's a public conversation of all possibilities for how the city could bring in new or different revenue in the future. Do we have any additional council members who wish to speak at this time? And if not, I will allow it to move over to residents. And Councilmember Amedicus, did you have something else or did I just forget to take your hand down?
I think you forgot to take my hand down.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Ellett, same question. Do you need, have something else you need to finish with? Or is it just that you're, I forgot to take your hand down?
I think you forgot to take my hand down. Oh.
Great. So then we're going to move to, we're going to move to resident comments. So if there are residents in the room that wish to speak, if you would please raise your hand. And each resident will get a four minute opportunity to speak on this item. And the first person is Dr. Browning. Dr. Browning, you have the floor?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to reiterate the appreciation I have for the mayor and the city administrative staff for preparing this. Unlike some comments, I think it has been well thought out and is based on the best information that they can come up with. We're, we're shooting in the dark to a great extent, but we know the dark is very deep and scary. I spent 25 years practicing medicine. In the last 30 years, I've spent reorganizing insurance companies that were going broke or trying to start ones that started out right and we didn't have to do that. And I have seen this conversation over and over and over by those who are afraid of change and are wanting to bring in ancillary issues and take away the ability of the mayor and the city administrator to do what they know is best and good and have their ear to the ground and know what's happening. Otherwise, to say we need to stop and think, there's been a lot of thinking done before we got to this meeting. Some of it useful, some of it not so useful. But to stop and think in the midst of this storm is like, reminds me of Emperor Nero in Imperial a building fiddling and singing while Rome was burning around it and hoping that it would stop. Well, it's not going to stop, and I think it's likely to be as bad or worse than we can imagine or plan for. So at best, we need to plan for, if not immediate, medium worst case scenario, the worst case, and save these funds because it could take us five years to get business going again and the gross national product to get back to even close to where it was. But I really appreciate what the mayor and Sylvia have done with this to help us. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Browning. Liz Wright, you have the floor?
Do what?
We can hear you. Your hand is raised. Did you have something?
Okay. Yes, I, I, I wanted to kind of mimic what Dr. Browning said. I really appreciate what the mayor and Sylvia did on this. I got this on a Sunday. I did not see any other council people that I know of, if they were, I apologize, involved with this. So that's why we're discussing this now. We're not waiting to have another council meeting. We're not waiting to have another finance meeting. We're not waiting to just talk over and over and over. We're talking about it now. And people want stuff done now. I heard the comment, the sky's not falling. Well, I don't think it's falling, but I think we really, we have to make again some hard, hard decisions. And item number two says approximated total. That does not define a solid number, and people keep coming back to that. You will get the exact number. It, yes, it's going to take a little while. But that's why we have people that are taking care of our books. That's now why we have this open government thing that we're doing. So we'll be better able to say, right now, this is where we are. So I just wanted to put that out there. And thanks again. And I really do appreciate our, our police chief offering up to make some budget cuts. Most people don't want to take, don't want to take cuts. don't want to take cuts or offer cuts. So I think that's very admirable. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Wells, you have the floor.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Actually, I got a few things here. First of all, Councilmember Reitz and Dr. Browning had mentioned contracting out services to save the city money. I agree with that. I think, I think that's something that we need to do. Again, we're going to have to make some hard decisions. And part of that is, unfortunately, what I see is we're going to have to cut city staff, which kind of a segue into number three of Councilmember Ellett's motion that reads, direct the city administrator, let me read that, and mayor to reduce personnel expenses by 10 to 15 percent. I would amend that to read, direct the city administrator and mayor to reduce personnel expenses as deemed necessary. Okay? I don't think we can really put a percentage on it or a number on it right now, given, given all the uncertainties and situation that we have. I just don't think that's feasible. I think it's too limiting. So I think if it was more, I don't want to say open-ended, but more flexible, I'd say. And then on number two, kind of ditto the same thing. I like the, it says, what is it, eliminate all budget allocations deemed non-essential from fiscal year 2019, 2019 to 2020 budget as discussed this evening and presented herein, an approximated total of 410,000. Again, I think we have so many moving parts and unknown variables. I think it's hard to really get to a, to a number. And I understand it says approximated, but, but I think it very well could turn out to be even much different than that number, Reitz. Another thing too is like to comment on the city reserves. I really would not want to touch the city reserves. I think if we could make the appropriate cuts, and they need to be steep, deep cuts, I think that we can avoid having to do that to cut it, to cut our, our city reserves. And another thing that, lastly, and which I do not have a dog in this fight, would be the hotel occupation tax, the hot tax. This doesn't apply to me at all whatsoever. But the, what I mean is, is that I don't rent out my property to anybody. But I know the residents that do, they may need some extra help. And I know probably some of my neighbors do. And what I'd like to do is see possibly that eliminate, the hotel tax for residents eliminated now as it stands, to maybe help our residents and give them a, give them a helping hand. So I don't know, again, that's, that'd be my opinion on that. And I'd like, you know, I'd like maybe council or admin to maybe consider, consider invoking that. And I believe that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Sylvia, would you just, as part of the comment that Mark Wells made, my understanding is that currently, certainly Mark is also talking about longer term, but short-term, there's part of the county orders that short-term rentals are not allowed to operate. Is that your...
That's correct.
Correct. So although the Holiday Inn has permission to operate any other short-term rentals or things that would be on site, such as Airbnb, are actually not allowed to operate at this time under the county ordinance. We have one other resident with their hand raised. If there's anybody else, please make sure to get in line before we go back to council. Clayton Stice, you have the floor.
Hi, this is Clayton. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I just wanted to really express my thanks to the mayor and as well as both Sylvia and Phil, for the work they've done on crunching all of the budget numbers and preparing for this in such short notice. I know that they spent a phenomenal amount of time doing this, and I really appreciate their efforts. And I think that most of the rest of Sunset Valley would also echo my sentiments that we have people in the council that are being proactive and trying to make the right decision. And that's it.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else who would like to speak? And that would include council members? And if not, we will move to take action on this motion, and we will do it the same way that we did with the previous. I will call for the vote. Yes? Oh, sorry.
One more comment. I had a comment from Sasha.
Yes, please read Sasha's notes.
Sasha says, I agree that we need to eliminate non-essential activities caused during the crisis. However, I think we need to approach the challenge with calmness and wisdom in order to move from this crisis into recovery. I would like to be sure that the council is willing to revisit the cutting of these programs once we are in recovery mode. Further, I commend you all for the hard work you undertake on our behalf.
Thank you. And councilmembers, I'm now going to call for your vote. So all councilmembers...
Mickey Powers has her comments as well.
Oh, sorry, I see Mickey. Did she, oh, never mind. A bunch of hands just popped up on my view screen. Mickey, did she want to have you read something, or did she want to speak? Because I do see that she's in the room.
She wants to speak.
Okay. Councilmember, sorry, ex-councilmember Powers, you have the floor. And it looks like you're self-muted. I've sent you a request to unmute your own device. Mickey, I will come back to you to see if, I'll circle back around to you. Alfonso, Alfonso Carmona, you have the floor. And it looks like you also are self-muted. Alfonso, I will come back to you in a minute. I don't see any other non-council members. I'm going to come back to Mickey Powers. You have the floor. It looks like you're self-muted. I've sent you a request to unmute your own device.
Hello?
Hi, Alfonso. We can hear you now. You have the floor.
Hello? Okay.
Hi, Alfonso.
Good night, everybody.
Good evening.
Okay. I think, thank you. Last week, I was talking about the reports. And now I saw the reports from the, from the statements of revenues and expenditures. And with that reports, we have a better idea. And this is something that next, in the following days, we will try to study. But I was reading a lot about that. And in a few words, I will try to say that at this moment, we know that the budget is six months. Everybody understand that. And until now, we have $2.3 million that is our revenue. I was looking at budgets, and, and I was reading, and I saw that most of the business, they tried to have something, then you say, what is your basic? And this is from where you would be moving. So the variable expenditures that we have, I saw all of them in your list, Rosie, or mayor, I'm sorry. And they are, they are okay. But I think that we can, we can take more. I think that this list is a base, but with the new report that they gave it to us, that will help. In that report, unfortunately, they didn't attach the crime, the crime control. And it was until today that I request that paper. And that will be critical for the police. So because this is extra money, and when they say that these different funds, it's different funds, but at this moment, we allocate that fund as operational. And we know that it's restricted, or it's committed for these police and et cetera. But in that area, we will have a big, big problem. In the others, no, because the streets, we can postpone some of the projects. In green tax, we can postpone. But in the police, that is the crime tax, we cannot postpone. So this is another hole that we have, and we need to watch very close. I agree that at this moment, we need to start with some cuts, but we need to analyze. And not only the finance. I think that some people, they need to put a little more hours. And in that way, that will be much better. So I agree with all that they are doing, and congratulations. It's good for all the citizens. I think that a lot of citizens, perhaps they don't understand all the effort that you are doing. But please, at this moment, we need to put more emphasis and more specific, as they say. With the 10 and 15 percent, it's only $250,000 to $375,000. And they are talking in the number three. So I think that that needs to be a little more open and with more details. Because when I was looking public works, KD is only $200,000. So I saw the extra money that will be there. And with some vacancies and some freeze positions, we can obtain more. In utilities, because now we have three buildings, will be high. So now the maintenance and other kind of things is something that will be more expensive. So perhaps after this will pass, perhaps one of that building, it can be closed or something because it's unnecessary to three employees in all of that installations. So this is my suggestion, that we need to spend a little more time watching. Thank you. Hello?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Alfonso. Councilmember Powers?
I have Mickey Powers' comments.
Okay, great. Well, it looks like, Mickey, we can hear you. I just saw you go green.
I've been poking and moving this thing all around. I'm sort of a troglodyte when it comes to this modern stuff. Thank you very much. I wanted to comment that I agree with Terry Cowan in not panicking, but I do want to say that I, that we don't need to stall either. We don't need to be casual about this, but we need to be very proactive. And I want to thank the council and the mayor for what they have done to put this together very much. I do want to comment that I believe that our city staff are our family. They have carried us through many things. And as is happening all over the country with regard to starving for restaurants and for everything else, I want to take care of our family to the very best possible that we can. And that includes not cutting anyone unnecessarily. So I want this to be looked at extremely carefully before we cut someone. I think there are duties that can be reassigned that can be possibly in talking about our business recovery, things that you, one of the staff members might normally go over and talk to our business people. Someone else on the staff could be reassigned to go do these things and do the footwork for these kinds of things. I don't think at this time we should cut the health, the health benefits. This is the absolute wrong time for us to be cutting that. So I do want to treat them like our family. They have done well for us. And needless to say, we wouldn't hire anyone new, but we do want to take care of those people that have been working for us. Reassign them whenever possible. With regard to reallocating some funds, some of the hot fund things, I mentioned this the last time. I would like to see some significant signs on Brody Lane and on our access road. These businesses are open. And I've seen some small paltry signs, some two-by-fives, I mean, two-by-three signs saying, hey, we're open. And you barely notice that you're going by those signs. So we can reallocate our funds to help bring people into our city by putting up some signs and helping our business people. Once again, I don't believe that we should panic. I do believe it's going to take years, not months, to recover from this. I don't think our city will look the same when it's over. I think our shopping centers will be different. And we need to be creative how we can use those to our best benefit and the benefits of the citizens of the city. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mickey. We have one additional resident, Councilmember Ellett. I do see that you have your hand up. I'm going to allow the last resident to speak and then move to you. Terry Cowan, you have the floor.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment and ask a question. Cutting staff prior to identifying the total potential cost savings, and it seems premature. And I agree with Mickey in regard to being very, very serious about the prospect of throwing workers into a pandemic job market where there's no jobs available and where people will lose their medical benefits. We're not at that point yet. So I question this, that doing it at this time, and my question is, is this in response to needing to cut costs, or is this just certain, does members of council just really feel that the city staff is too large, and this is an opportunity to cut it? Thank you.
Councilmember Ellett, you have the floor. Councilmember Ellett, you have the floor.
Yes, madam mayor, thank you. I appreciate all of the citizens' comments. I appreciate all the comments from the council. I'd like to, at this stage, call the question if we have received all the comments from citizens and council.
We have one additional comment from Councilmember Rosengarden, and then I will call for the vote.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rosengarden?
I would ask that the motion maker and the, add number six, no merit salary or step program increases for the next six months. No merit salary or step program increases for the next six months.
So I will first see if the motion maker would accept that amendment.
I'm trying, madam mayor, I'm trying to think this one through. I understand Councilmember Rosengarden's question, and I think it makes sense. I'd also ask the second to weigh in on this as well. I want to be cooperative and do the right thing.
And Councilmember Rosengarden, while you still have the floor, I will then open Wanda to speak as the second for this motion. But would you repeat your amendment request?
No merit salary or step program increases for the next six months. That's basically freezing all salaries right now.
Thank you. So that would be for the remainder of this fiscal year?
Yes. I would be fine with that.
The second accepts that. Does the motion maker accept?
Yes, I do.
And Sylvia, were you able to, Sylvia and city secretary were able to add that, which would be a sixth item to the five-item motion, which is in addition to those five items, that no step merit increase be provided during the remainder of this fiscal year? Sylvia, were you able to get that?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez, you have the floor. I hear somebody typing. Councilmember Gonzalez, you have the floor, but it looks like you might be... Councilmember Gonzalez, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just have to make a last-ditch effort that if people are going to be let go, that we preserve health insurance for a significant amount of time, at least three months. That has, that has been suggested before. I do not, I'm not in favor of people being let go, but if they do, I certainly hope that we are going to do that. And I, again, am putting out a plea that, that people maintain their health, their health insurance at full And I, again, am putting out a plea that people maintain their health insurance at full at this time. That's, I'm just putting that in there as a friendly amendment.
Thank you. Councilmember Reed, you have the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to.
Great. Well, I'm going to leave you unmuted since Councilmember Gonzalez did, as she said, she made another last attempt at an amendment. So I'm going to unmute the motion maker and the second. Do either of you accept that friendly amendment?
I think it's probably one of those things that will be addressed in the item number two. So I don't want to, I want to look at all possibilities for item number two. So I would not accept that at this point. But I think that the staff can, administration can make suggestions.
Okay. Councilmembers, if you would please, at this time, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yea by submitting your vote via chat. All those not in favor, please say nay. Sylvia, if you would please read the vote back to us.
The vote?
Yes.
Sorry, Sylvia, we couldn't hear you. Would you please start over and reading the vote back?
Councilmember Elliott, yes. Councilmember Rosengarden, yes. Councilmember Reed, yes. Councilmember Gonzalez, yes.
Do we have Councilmember Medicas?
Not yet. Councilmember Medicas, yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Councilmembers, if every council member would please raise your hand if you need us to take a five-minute break before we move to the next item. Councilmember Gonzalez, it just takes one. Thank you. It is 8:02. We will break for five minutes. And before we break, for residents who are in the room listening, we have, I, as the sponsor of item number 12, I did pull that item earlier this evening and I sent a detailed explanation to council members. The main reason was to clean up the backup, but also because I could see that we were going to have a long night tonight. So I pulled that item also for the sake of time. We will now take a break for five minutes and we will reconvene at 8:08. Thank you. Good evening and welcome back. We are resuming regular council meeting for the city of Sunset Valley for Tuesday, April 7. We are resuming at 8:09. We have three remaining items tonight. On any other night, I would say that presentation items might be worth postponing. All three of these items are very critical to decisions that both council, budget and finance and staff and myself will be making. So I would encourage residents, if possible, to stay on and to provide input because that input will be critical into the next set of financial decisions that we make as a city. The presentations will be over the hotel occupancy funds, the venue tax, and community events and services within the city. We will start with item number eight, presentation regarding hotel occupancy funds. And Sylvia, I will let you begin and certainly sponsor Councilmember Elliott. If at any point you want to interject, please raise your hand.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The presentation is regarding hot funds. And it stemmed from a conversation that, at one point, there were some audience members within CED and some members within the CED committee themselves that were asking the question, what are they, what can they be used for, and how can we better use them? So this is an opportunity for some education. Information is obtained by the Texas Comptroller and the Sunset Valley budgets, 14, 15, all the way through 1920. So the hot fund, as is so commonly reserved, is a hotel occupancy tax. It is a tax that is paid by the guests that stay in our hotels. Anybody who rents a room or space costs you more than $15 a day. The current rate for Sunset Valley is 7%. The state of Texas gets 6%, which brings our total hotel tax at 13%. I will tell you, other cities, this rate fluctuates. There are other pieces that can be incorporated into the hot fund itself. There's an opportunity for an additional venue tax, et cetera, within this pot. How can they be used? There is a very strict requirement for hot funds. The two-part test is what we often call it. One, it must directly promote tourism and the convention and hotel industry. It can only be used to directly promote those items. That means the proceeds should be spent on any projects or events that result in visitors and attendees staying overnight and generating additional taxes. It really should be a self-fulfilling fund. And then test number two is it should fit into one or more of the following categories. And again, that is construction facilities, encouragement of the arts, et cetera, that will also draw visitors back into town. How much money is in the hot fund? In FY 2019, there is an ending balance of $621,134. These are the contribution rates among the years. So how do we use the hot funds? $115,000 for marketing, $79,000 for Art Fest, $41.9 to the farmer's market, $15,000 for the JDRF One Walk. And last year, but not in this year's budget, there was $5,000 for Bougie's Run. Bougie's Donuts held a fun run. The main events, marketing and advertising, which is a year-round period. It has a local advertising reach. We have not done any national advertising that would have us expand the reach attracted into Sunset Valley. Relatively low cost to the city. However, we don't have any track-through capability. And you'll see that is the issue among all of the spending categories. It's very difficult to track what visitors were here and what hotels they actually stayed in and what events they actually attended. Art Fest is, for now, a one-day event. Attendance, you know, we've seen a variety of numbers. I think Councilmember Medicas can chime in more on that. Local advertising, cost to the city, Councilmember Elliott, this is marked as high. Again, no track-through capacity. Farmer's Market, 52 days a year, which is every weekend. Attendance, we've learned from our recent COVID experience, attendance also not verified. That number fluctuates greatly. There is local advertising. Every farmer's market advertising lists Sunset Valley. Medium cost for attendee, and again, no track capability. JDRF is a one-day event. They have attendance verified through their registration. Local statewide and national advertising through the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation. Overall, the cost of the city is low, given the number that JDRF attracts. But again, very little track capability on what hotels they are actually renting, how many rooms, blocks, et cetera. So this goes to some of the discussion that we talked about earlier. How can we better use the funds? So there is a recommendation, development of activities and events that have measured attendance. True measurement processes that determine a return on investment or ROI. Track-through measurement, what percentage of reached attendance actually visits the retail areas. And then perhaps working on our funds to have a multiplying effect by securing sponsorships from other local and state businesses. Development and implementation of contracts with third-party vendors that are competitive or in sync with activity goals and objectives. And this is to provide a clear service level commitment of what we would be receiving for the funds invested. And improve our social media and digital advertising. That is where mainstream media, all of, you hear the term "social influence", those outlets have had the greatest reach in recent times, whereas things that go to print are having less of a reach. So potential ideas for the future. Quarterly activities in the retail areas. This is, again, to drum up to Mickey's point earlier. You know, we don't even know they're open, what's there. This is going to be really critical in the next several months as we begin to reopen our shops and letting folks know what's here. Again, touching on the increased digital and social media. And then there's been discussion of a holiday festival to really capitalize on the shopping season that is a big part of our fund contribution. So what can we do to do that? Well, develop a set of measurement tools, performance measures, right, to use in the preparation of planned activities and events. Develop a standard contract to be utilized with all third-party vendors. Implement a common fiscal reporting mechanism for all events and activities. And work with our marketing company to implement ways to track attendance and track-through measurement tools. Council action that is sought tonight is direct the city administrator to develop policy guidelines for council adoption. And then, in light of recent developments, direct the city administrator to present information regarding potential alternative uses for hot funds at the 4/21 council meeting. Any questions?
Thank you, Sylvia. I'll start by saying thank you, Councilmember Elliott, for putting this together. And I would strongly encourage council members to vote and approve both of those actions. And I would really welcome a fresh perspective from you, Sylvia, of a full list of potential options of how we could use our hot funds that fall under legal allowances, but that are specific to creative or different uses that we have not previously thought of or utilized in our city. Councilmember Elliott, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to say two things. One is I want to thank Sylvia and Ray Jean for the help in putting this together. It's greatly appreciated and the verification of the numbers, that is greatly appreciated. And number two, what I'm attempting to do here is give us a foundation where we can implement, you know, great programs. There's no shortage of ideas coming from, whether it's the Arts Commission, whether it be CED or whatever, and have a way that we can, you know, put into action, you know, common measurement processes, common accounting processes, a contract that reflects, you know, that our desires, our goals and objectives are in sync with, you know, any service level commitment we may make. I really can't add anything. Sylvia did a great job representing that. And as I say, I would urge the council to adopt the two actions over there and so that we can move ahead with this. Thank you, Sylvia. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Rosengarden, you have the floor.
Okay, when you say adopt the two recommendations,
Okay, when you say adopt the two recommendations, but doesn't say that, oh, I'm sorry, prioritaries, programs, events, and services. So this is what I would recommend, is that we suspend all community events at this time. Those who want those community events can pay for them. And we take 10 items under the other category and let staff decide which 10 items are non-essential and then inform residents of changes. For instance, I didn't know there was trailer usage or residential landscape consultation. I know there's an arborist, but landscape consultation. Also...
Councilmember Rosengarten, which presentation are you on?
Number... Never mind. 11!
You are so perfectly geared up, we're just not quite there yet. And I'm glad I caught that. When you said trailer, when you said trailer, it made me realize you were on the community item. So what I was referencing was in the last slide. I would love to see council make a simple action this evening, which is to vote in favor of the two actions presented at the end of the hot fund slide deck. Councilmember Elliott, you still have the floor.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to call a vote on this, please, if I may. I think...
You have to make a motion first and get a second.
I will. And the motion is very simple, to direct the city administrator to develop policy guidelines for council adoption in line with the presentation and the last but one slide. And also, in addition to that, also in addition, in light of what the council, council meeting 421, 2020, to direct the city administrator to present information regarding potential alternative uses for hot funds.
We have a motion, and because I have other councilmembers with their hands raised, if there's a councilmember who wants to second that motion, if you would please, through the chat feature, indicate that you would like to second it so that Sylvia can read that back to us. Do we have a second to Councilmember Elliott's motion? Which will open it for discussion.
I have a second from Councilmember Reitz.
We have a motion and a second to approve the items listed in the council action slide for the hot fund slide deck just presented. Councilmember Gonzalez, you have the floor.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I don't want to speak at this time.
Hello?
Yes, Councilmember Reitz, did you have an additional comment you wanted to make?
Yes, I just wanted to say I wanted to second this. I am particularly interested in that second bullet of learning alternative uses for the hot funds. I think this could be very helpful to us. There have been a lot of suggestions made tonight that are very interesting, and I think we should look into that. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, there's been, again, in my discussion with the city managers and administrators across the country today, there's been a lot of talk of partnering with the LIFT Fund, partnering with a lot of third-party funds, and using some of these, not just hot, but some other special pots of funds, to be able to help our small businesses. So I really want to explore that option.
Councilmember Rosengarten?
Thank you. I also like that we're bringing this back up again and introducing the thought of a visitor's center once more. I know that this isn't the mayor's favorite discussion. Using City Hall as a possible visitor's center helps to divert funds from the general fund and utilizing hot funds for certain items. Also, I have mentioned this before, that we should have signage over at the hotel directing people to the retail, and we should have signage in the retail directing people to the hotel. And the City Hall could be used as a regional or national tournament site, as a chess tournament site. Thank you.
Thank you, Rudy. And I would officially say that we are in a world now where I am open, I am now very much open to all options, including the visitor's center option, especially the way that Sylvia has presented it, which is that we could use percentages, potentially use it for percentages of our operating costs.
Correct.
A new world.
Yep. And that's what we were suggesting before, when we were trying to find funds for the city facilities, is do the visitor's center and City Hall, thus we were releasing some funds from the general fund to help fund the city facilities. And here we are, back at it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, I do see that Councilmember Elliott has his hand up. Are there any other councilmembers who have not spoken on this, either this presentation or the motion, that would like to speak? If not, I'll hand it back to Councilmember Elliott, and then I will open it up to the floor for resident input. Councilmember Elliott, you have the floor.
Madam Mayor, thank you. No, I just want to echo the, and totally support the... ...for all this. And so I totally support those.
Councilmember Medicus, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I agree, we need to look at all options on the hot fund. But I also think that it's important for us to keep in mind bringing people from outside of our local region into the community. And I liked Terry Cowan's suggestion about potentially using the equity that we have in our current annual event that brings in thousands of people to potentially build on or modify that into something that can generate funds and be a multi-day event for the city. If you look at all the small communities around our state, they all have some kind of an event that brings large numbers of people into their community, raises awareness about what their community has to offer. The Potteet Strawberry Festival, Georgetown Poppy Festival, and on and on. So I'd like those things to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional councilmembers who wish to speak? And do we have any residents who wish to speak on the presentation or the motion for item number eight? Do we have any additional council input before I call for a vote on this item? All those in favor, please say aye or yes via chat. Are those not in favor, please say nay or no. And Sylvia, when you have a vote, would you please do a roll call for all the votes?
Councilmember Rosengarten, aye. Councilmember Medicus, yes. Councilmember Elliott, yes. Councilmember Reitz, yes. Councilmember Gonzalez, yes.
Motion passes unanimously. That moves us to our next presentation, item number nine, presentation regarding the venue green tax for historic and educational information. And I'm going to allow, again, allow Sylvia to do the presentation on this. And one of the most important takeaways that I would like, especially based on our current position with retail and revenue, is that, one, we call it by its proper name, which is not the green tax. It is a venue tax that we have locally, we call it the green tax because of the ballot restrictions that we have put on it, but from a state level, this is actually a venue tax. And that one of the takeaways that I would like to get from this is input from councilmembers as to whether or not we want to start considering a possible redefinition, redefining of the venue. And if so, that we not waste time doing that, as it would have to be put on the ballot in November, and there will be deadlines one or more months in advance of that that requires Sylvia to submit the ballot language in order for it to appear on the ballot. And with that, Sylvia, if you would start your presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Some background, the venue tax is under the Texas Government Code, Chapter 334, under sports and community venues. It has been nicknamed the green tax. The original ballot language in 2008 was planning, acquisition, and development of a watershed protection program, the Edwards Aquifer Protection Venue Project, and it was limited to Brody Lane or Countrywide Lane and within the city of Sunset Valley or its ETJ. So in 2015, that definition was expanded to include all of Sunset Valley and its ETJ. So the legislative intent in the local government code is it is approved by resolution after a vote of the municipality. And so to the mayor's points, if we were going to decide to put this on the ballot, I would have to work my way back, and that deadline is fast approaching. That's going to be in the late May, early June timeframe. So the general provisions, there are definitions of allowed uses. It is a watershed protection, it is recharge, it is feature protections, conservation easements, open space preservation, and any program intended to protect water. We can plan, we can acquire, establish, develop, construct, or renovate an approved venue project. That's an allowed activity. This is the piece that rubs folks a little bit raw, is once the municipality acquires, they may sell, lease, convey, or otherwise dispose of a property that has been acquired through the venue. The municipality can set those conditions. So required financial reporting. This is, we talked about this a little bit earlier, the municipality may use the money in the venue project to reimburse itself, to pay for costs of those planning, acquisition, establishment, development, to pay the principal on other costs related to bonds or other obligations. And it can also be used to pay operating or maintaining one of the approved venue projects, one or more of the approved venue projects. Once the money from the venue is deposited, it is the property of the municipality or county depositing the money. Usage to date, 1920, you can see usage fluctuates. The highest has been land acquisition at almost $1 million. Environmental monitoring, which I think probably was the intent of this altogether, has about $1,400 spent in it. And then the Brody Lane has mat traps, which I don't think most folks are even aware that they exist within the medians. You were aware they were cleaned shortly after I got here, and we had some street closure issues. But by far, the greatest piece is land acquisition. So as of today, we have $1.5 million in the bank within the venue tax. Budget expenses this year are $390,000. This year, we've already spent $33,000, and we have a budget balance that theoretically should be expended of $357,000. The reserve in that fund is a required $1.2 million. So I've been talking about, we have a lot of pots of money, we have a lot of, in my mind, underutilized farms. And this is specifically because as a taxpayer, even though this is a tax that's funded by the sales tax, and our residents don't necessarily feel it, we truly should be better stewards of our monies and not have money just growing, sitting in pots. If we have projects, we really need to come to a completion to those projects, or we really need to plan so that the projects can be efficiently executed and really do move us to a purpose. The venue should not last forever. When you're done with the venue and you have been able to absorb and maintain the venue, then theoretically, the tax should be reabsorbed or redistributed or redefined. And I think that's the point where we are today. So my proposed path forward is, at this point, along with everything else, I'd like to halt spending. I'd like us to take a really, really good look at the resolution and the ballot language and make sure what we're doing is actually that intent. I firmly believe that we have expenses that can be allocated to this fund that are not being allocated. They're still being charged to the general fund. We have the opportunity to perhaps dissolve the tax. And I say that cautiously because, as I mentioned in other meetings, there are special-purpose districts all around us. And I've been in a city where we let go of a tax and another district came and snatched up that tax before we had the opportunity to redo the tax. I'm not saying that's going to happen in Sunset Valley, I just need the opportunity to make sure that we research that really well. In the backup, there are alternatives, sales tax option. There's a type A and type B. Corpus Christi, the city that I came from, had an original type A, which was business development, and type B ended up being used for street repair and street fund, along with an additional street tax. My prior city, we created the municipal development district. That is legislation that was written specifically for Aransas Pass, and it's now been modeled by other cities. In Aransas Pass, we built an aquatic center, and we built the convention center with the MUD. In the MUD, in the MDD, you're able to borrow money and use the proceeds of the venue to pay the bonds off. You cannot dissolve the MDD until all of the bonds have been paid off. It's very tricky. That requires a separate board of directors that sometimes is separate from your council. So there's a little bit of turf war. There's also the opportunity for property tax relief to also be incorporated if we were to reprogram that tax. And then if we find ourselves in a, in more of a pinch, there's an emergency services district that could be created. That one is difficult because it requires buy-in from not just Sunset Valley, but Travis County and all of the other special-purpose districts that are around us to make sure that there wouldn't be a detriment to them. My hope is that we would really take a look at the venue itself and review what we need within our city and make sure that that's still in line. And if we need to redefine it, if we need to review it, then we have the opportunity to do that and invest those funds wisely, spend them efficiently, and if we have the opportunity for relief in any of the other funds, that we do that immediately. Questions and council direction?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
I was remembering another tax, and I guess I have to go back and research it, that was a lot more fluid than this. Is this the whole universe's taxes, and my memory is faulty? But because I know that these are all ones I remember, but I was remembering one that was a lot more fluid, and the one that I'm going to be most in favor of is the one that's going to be the most fluid.
The venue tax is pretty specific. It is narrow. It does have a narrow definition, and it is, you are tied to a more general or more specific definition in your resolution and in your ballot language. And your type A tax, for example, is just broad, and it just says economic development. Your type B tax may say economic development and infrastructure that supports that development. So, you know, they all have their little nuances. The MDD is also specific. That, it's not complicated to set up, but it is more than your normal setup. But yes, the venue tax is a very specific definition.
Sylvia, would you take a minute? Go ahead, sorry, Melissa, go ahead.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, is this the entire, we're talking about ballot language. This is my frame. We're talking about ballot language changes, perhaps to put a different, more broad, in my opinion, use of this bit of tax, that we're suggesting capping it, which I'm in favor of, and either making it go away, in which case we can let our merchants say yet again that we have less taxes here in Sunset Valley, or if we're going to keep a tax, we have it for the most broad use possible, because we don't know what the future is going to bring. So those are my two suggestions. And I thought that there was yet another one besides this list that we had as a possibility, and that's what I'm asking. Or is my memory faulty?
Could you do one thing to be somewhat responsive to what Melissa said, and also for everybody who's watching, since they can see your screen? Would you go to the mayor's dashboard tab one?
Yes.
Just so that people can reference. So there is a document that I have tabbed there under line 33, sales tax categories, and it's a link that residents can click on, and it's basically a summary flyer created by the comptroller's office. That won't answer all of your questions, Councilmember Gonzalez, but that is a starting point, because it's not created by us, it's created by the entity above us. point, because it's not created by us, it's created by the entity above us. And then Sylvia, you might want to add more to the, to answer, to be more responsive to what Councilmember Gonzalez just asked.
Here is, Sales Tax Categories Per State Regs, it's, it's this red link, I don't know if, if I can zoom in, Mayor, you probably have, let's see, I can zoom in some more and be able to show, it's, I don't know where it went. Let me just try going one by one. Sales Tax Categories Per State Regs, that's, that's where the link.
Will you click, will you click on that link so that they can see it? Thank you.
So these are approved options, and within your backup, within your backup, those options are included. So there's the type A, type B, the economic developments, and some of the other taxes. So they're, they're in direct relation to what the mayor is showing in her dashboard. And this is a good explanation of what cities can use. As I was telling you, in, in my other city, we had type A and type B, and in another city, we also had an MDD. So I will tell you, there's a wide variety of uses for the tax itself, it's dependent on the city to determine what its needs are.
And then if, if you, yeah, so on, you can scroll to the part where we see on that link where it talks about the venue tax, because that's probably one of the most, especially when I'm speaking to new residents or residents who aren't as familiar with our budget, it gets the misnomer of the green tax fund. So if you look on this sheet, it clearly shows that what we call the green tax fund is not a category. We call it that because it's what makes sense to the way that we've categorized the use, but it's actually the venue tax, or from a state, yeah, the state colloquial term for it is the stadium bill.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Gonzalez, you still have the floor, did you want to qualify your question, or did you get the answer that you needed before I pass it to the next person?
I, I think that, I will just say that I'm, I'm in favor of taking the broadest one with the least restriction, and if we do that, or setting it down and letting people say that yes, it's less taxes in Sunset Valley again, those are my suggestions about
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. I see Doug, I'm trying to unmute you, but it's not letting me, so you, if you have the ability, if you are, I see that your hand is up, which makes me think you want to correct something that we've potentially stated wrong. I will move to the next speaker, but Doug, if, I'm going to leave you unmuted and see if I see you are able to get your microphone working. Councilmember Ellett, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just got some questions and some, some comments. First of all, yes, I applaud, you know, us looking at what is the best use for this tax, or not use of this tax as council member, or not having a tax, as Councilmember Gonzalez stated. A couple of points, just rudimentary qualifications, in order for us to do anything different from what we're doing with this tax, it requires a ballot and it approves, requires approval of the residents, correct?
Yes, but I think Doug's trying to clarify that.
Okay, and I also.
Sylvia, would you just, before, on that question, that point that Councilmember Ellett just brought up, my understanding was that we could eliminate, that council actually could eliminate the tax, but if we were going to redefine the venue, or in any way change the, what was approved on the last ballot language, that would require it being on a ballot.
Yes, that's what I understood as well.
Hopefully, hopefully Doug gets cleared up so he can correct us on the things, yep.
Okay, with that as an assumption then, and let me go back to how, putting this on the ballot, and I listened to Sylvia, in order for this to go on the ballot in November, we have a relatively short time period to get that done, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and my next question is, along with this, along with residents making an informed decision on this, which I want them to do, we have to do an education process with our residents. This is complicated stuff, and even as council members, we're getting educated as we speak here, what would be the education process that we would use so that when the people go into the polling booth, that they are making an informed decision? How would we go about that?
Well, anytime you're, you're going out to the voters, you need to put out an educational brochure in both English and Spanish, and whatever the primary language is in your community. You need to clearly explain what the ballot is going to be, what the impact to them is, and what the results of that would be. So we would need some time to develop that, assuming council has made the decision to redefine it, and redefine it into something that is very clear, and we could move toward.
And while I'm waiting, while I'm addressing other people who have their hands raised, would either Carolyn or Sylvia, would you try through the chat feature, or maybe even through an actual phone, try to help Doug so that we can ensure that we get his comments heard by everybody this evening?
I will contact.
Councilmember, thank you. Councilmember Reitz, you have the floor.
Yes, so I think this is a bit of an opportunity for us, and I can think of several ways in which to make use of those funds. And so what I think that makes sense to me is for the city administrator to come back to us with some possible alternative tax, I guess it's tax A or B, and what would be the best for our city. So that's what I would like to see, I would like to see some possible options. I can think of a few myself, but it does take a little thought process. Thanks.
Councilmember Reitz, that sounded almost like a motion, was that a motion?
Yes, I would request that the city administrator come back with viable options for other uses of the venue tax that we currently have, within the timeframe, to put on the ballot in November.
We have a motion, if we have a second to that motion, could somebody please?
I have Doug on the phone.
Great, so before I hand it over to Doug, to finish the, the current action on the table, do we have a second from another council member to Councilmember Reitz's motion? And if so, would you please indicate through chat?
Mute your, your computer. I have a second from Councilmember Ellett.
Great, so we have a second, which opens it up for discussion. Councilmember Reitz, and to the second, would you be willing to accept the friendly amendment that that action also include Sylvia bringing back any viable options that are applicable to our city outside of the venue tax as well?
Yes.
Does the second accept that as well?
Yes.
Doug, I'm going to try again.
Go ahead, Doug.
Did you see me, I'm sorry, I can't understand anything now. I missed the last three minutes since I've been on speakerphone. Sylvia, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
We can all, we can all hear you, Doug.
Okay, I just wanted to say that all the sales tax by special districts or the city, they are limited by the 2% cap that applies to all cumulatively. So if you, for instance, if you wanted to look at an ESD, most of them are funded by property taxes, but they do have the authority to do a sales tax. They would be taking up some of the city's 2%, 2 cent cap, so that would, and that would have to go toward emergency services. Some of the, like the type A and B economic development corporations, the advantage of them is that there's a specific authorization to use those funds to, for economic development, which generally cannot be done by a city, except through Chapter 380, where you can do economic development programs, and you could probably effectively do everything and more that an economic development corporation can do. To Melissa's point, if the idea was to have the greatest leeway, the greatest freedom on how to spend money, perhaps the best thing would be to eliminate all special taxes and just increase the general sales tax to 2 cents, and then you could use it anyway for any municipal purpose. If you wanted to do some economic development, you could also do Chapter 380 agreements and effectively do what some of those special districts could do. And I think that's all, and I hope I didn't get off track, because I didn't follow the last couple minutes of the conversation, sorry.
No, Doug, in fact, I'd say that was beyond helpful, what you just added, and so much so that I would want to make sure that the city secretary is able to transcribe that for Sylvia, so that all of that gets incorporated into the research and presentation that she brings back. But I would, because you were also answering Councilmember Gonzalez's question, Councilmember Gonzalez, would you raise your hand again while we have a way to communicate with Doug if that did not fully answer your question? And, so your hand pop up and then pop back down. Okay, Councilmember Ellett, did you have another question? You have the floor.
Sylvia, could you tell me?
No, I don't, and I actually don't show my hand is up, but no, I don't, thanks for the clarification.
And Councilmember Gonzalez, I saw your hand pop up and down, it's down now, so I won't, please push it again if you did want to speak. If there are, okay, I see you again, Councilmember Gonzalez, you have the floor.
Hi, had I gotten that information, I would have made that motion, so I really do don't want to lose that off the table. That was what I was going for, was that we could, we could have the same amount of tax, especially at this time, for general fund purposes, and do a 380, and do whatever the heck we want to do without restrictions, and without having to have a board, which is what the problem is with, with the As and the Bs. The As are particularly restrictive, as I recall, and the Bs, you have to have these, these boards and the processes, it's very cumbersome. So, so that was what I was going for, was what Doug said, I just couldn't remember it and to speak to it, and so I don't want that lost, because that is the most flexibility at a time that we're, that we're going to need the most funds. And so while I appreciate the motion that's on the table, I do want to point that that would have been, had I gotten that information, what I would have proposed. So I don't want to preclude it, and I think it would give us, as a city, the most flexibility. Now be quiet, thank you.
Thank you. Maybe to keep that a little simpler with the, not, not simplifying what you said, Melissa, but finding a way to simplify it and include it into the motion, would the maker and the second accept that all the information that was just provided by Doug, that that also be included in the research and presentation from staff? And so that would be Councilmember Reitz, would you agree to that? And then also, Councilmember Ellett?
Yes, I would.
Okay, and I no longer can see if Doug is on, so Sylvia, would you make sure, and City Secretary, Ray Jean, would you make sure that the input that he provided is included, and that we also utilize his services to ensure that he's given us all of his ideas as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Ellett, do you also accept that addition to the motion, which is to include Doug's input?
Yes, I do.
Do we have any additional input from council members or from the public? I did see Terry Cowan had his hand up before, but I don't see it up anymore. Are there any council members or anybody from the public who would like to speak on this item before we take action? Dr. Browning, you have the floor.
Yes, I wanted to ask a question. I wonder if Sylvia or anyone knows of a study that's been done to determine if we have sufficient permeable cover in the massive amount of greenbelt we have here, as well as other things that have been done to mediate this, such as ponds that have been required to commercial venues, such that we have, we have enough protection of that aquifer now, and we don't need to focus on that so much anymore. That's all.
Thank you. Sylvia, can you speak to that question?
Not that I'm aware of. I'd have to, I'd have to go research that, I'm, I'm not aware.
All right.
Do we have any additional comments from the public or additional council input? Seeing none, I'll ask for the vote at this time. All those in favor, please say aye, or yea, or yes via chat, those not in favor, say no. And Sylvia, when you have the votes, if you'd please read them back to us.
Councilmember Medicas, yes. Councilmember Ellett, yes. Councilmember Gonzalez, yes. Councilmember Rosen Garden, yes. Councilmember Reitz, yes.
Motion passes unanimously. This moves us along to our final item of the evening, item number 11. This is a presentation in possible direction to staff regarding community events and services. This is also an item that I've, I'm sponsoring and sponsoring, and that I had put together, mostly with work that Carolyn, I believe Jenny may have also helped Carolyn and Sylvia, we've actually worked on this for many weeks because it's evolved, and as you can imagine, we were working on this pre-COVID, and it took on a much different level of importance because it will now provide a little bit more information and clarity as we potentially freeze or eliminate community events this fiscal year and into the upcoming fiscal year. But it still seemed like a very important presentation so that council members could understand, for me, what was important was to get a better assessment of not just what cash and money we are allocating per the budget, but also to get a much better breakdown of how much staff time, and how much staff time is coming into different departments, and then how we would properly calculate that staff time into a number so that we can get a more accurate assessment of what each of our community programs is costing the city. With that, I will hand it over to Sylvia.
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, yes, this has taken on a completely different scope from the time we began to draft this. We've identified 15 community events. There are a variety of pots those are paid from, there's $30,400 from the general fund, $81,000 in hot, and $4,000 in venue, and those are cost for the, the event. Additionally, we have about $25,000 or $28,000 worth of staff hourly time that we can allocate to the events. The highest being, or most intensive being Arc Fest, followed closely by National Night Out. We have, I think, to Councilmember Rosen Garden's point, we have 20, and I'm going to tell you, just having been here the time that I have, I'm going to tell you, it's probably way more than 20, but 20 on the regular other quote-unquote items that we take care of, that to the tune of about $64,000 in the general fund, 12 in venue, and $15,000 in the drainage fund. It also have additional staff time of about $2,300 to $5,800 a year. So the 15 community events are the things that everybody knows that we do in Sunset Valley, the star party, open house, spring fling, creek cleanups, Arbor Days, Sowing Community, the Volunteer Awards banquet, Business Networking Luncheon. All of those seem benign, but there is a lot of staff time and resources that are taken into account when putting the event together. Other, so curbside brush chipping, when we've got folks who cut down trees and bring them out to the curb, will go out and mulch. One, it's easier for us to assemble rather than bringing it over to the site and, you know, doing all of that. We deliver mulch. Bulk items, we allow our trailer to be used, obviously the adopt a tree program, we do landscaping consultations for residents, the variety of rebate programs that are here, the ant bait program, which is really a pass-through cost, we buy the bait, they come and buy it from the city, the community garden, there's a nonprofit that manages that, we help with the community garden, there's soil delivery, we do residential right-of-way, there's litter pickup throughout, not just the commercial centers, but also in the residential centers, our ditch and right-of-way maintenance, which is the drainage fee. But there's a bunch of these little resident requests that I think our folks of these little resident requests that I think our folks don't know are happening. We'll come get you out of the mud if you're stuck. We'll help you fix your flat tire. We will change your doorbell. We'll do repairs around your property if you need it. Installing signs, rebuilding broken mailboxes, et cetera, et cetera. And again, they may seem benign, but when staff is busy doing one of those things, we're not able to be doing the super emergent health and safety items. Right now, a lot of the other has been significantly reduced because, again, we are in a, a much different world at this particular point. So overall staff costs is $94,000 in the general fund, $81,000 in the hot fund, $16,000 in the venue fund, and $15,000 in the drainage fund. Couple that with staff costs, at the high end, almost $29,000. So the intent for this originally was to help me prioritize those programs, events, and services that are unique to Sunset Valley. Every community has a unique feel. I get that. What may not work in Odessa works in Sunset Valley, and what works in Sunset Valley may not work in Round Rock. I need help ranking those as essential and non-essential, and I need to inform the residents of any changes that we intend to make tonight so that the expectations are clear about what we will or won't be doing anymore.
So with that, I will turn it over for questions and direction from the council.
Thank you, Sylvia. I don't have questions other than in, if you would scroll back to where you had the, the first one that showed staff hours. So not that one, but the previous, so on that one. Only because that seems like a low number, although it must be accurate for the, the 20 other, 291 hours, that's our estimate. That seems fairly low and reasonable.
That's a monthly, that's a monthly hour.
Got it. Okay. So yeah, it's a little different. For the other ones, that's the total cost. Whereas the, so really that bottom number, we would need to multiply it by 12. Got it. Okay. That's, I just wanted to make sense of the first to the second numbers.
Oh, oh, you're right. That should be.
Councilmember, the one thing that would be helpful to, I think, all of us tonight as we talk through these would be if there are any of these that you are prepared to say we should absolutely deem non-essential for the remainder of this year, that would be a helpful thing to instruct us on this evening. Councilmember Gonzalez, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would say that all community events for the rest of the year, I'm going to move that all community events for the rest of the year are, are shut down, including the youth, because I don't think that we're going to want to take that liability at, at this time. And I think that COVID is going to be with us for a while. And so I don't, I don't think that community events are the thing we should do this year. So I would move that. I would move that we suspend for the immediate, if you could slide that down to the, the.
Thank you. I was going to ask for that, too. Would you slide down to show what Councilmember Gonzalez is capturing in her action, Sylvia? Just, yeah.
Okay. So your, your complete list above of what's left of the events and the summer youth program, because those things are all multi-people, and multi-people is not a good thing this year. So anything that's multi-people, we're not going to do in, in, in this motion. In terms of immediate, for the next two months, I think we suspend all non-essential. So, you know, if it's like ant bait and it doesn't cost us anything, and people, you know, can get it at some point. But I mean, I think it really, that, that still requires staff and people interacting. So I'd say all things that are non-essential are suspended, at least for the next few months, and then we can reassess. But, but, but all of that, I think, should be suspended, and any event for the rest of the year should be cut. And then staff can look at what else they want to do, you know, further on in, in, in terms of their things. But that would be my motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Can I repeat that to make sure that I, at least that I understand it, is that you're saying that for the first list, 1 through 15, to eliminate those from the, plus the, thank you, that was the part one. And when you say the youth program, you mean the $38,000 American Youth Works, I mean, sorry, the teen program that I believe is.
Teen program, because anything where people are coming together that, that's under our purview. Somebody else is working for us, and they're doing their own things like we're doing, where we're doing American Youth Works because they're doing a job that we decide we need to do, then, then I'm going to leave that to staff to recommend or not recommend. But because of, you know, how that may all play out as to what was essential or not essential, I really am relying on staff for saying essential and not essential for other things. But anything that requires a lot of our people in one place together for the rest of the year, I think is a bad idea.
So the motion is to eliminate from this year's budget, 1 through 15, plus the teen program?
Yes.
Plus American Youth Works?
I, I would leave that to staff to decide as to whether they thought that was an essential thing because of what they had planned, like, because I, I'm not sure that fire things aren't essential. So I'm going to leave that to staff decisions. I'm not, I'm not adding that. But I am adding suspending all non-essentials on that list, because I think we've already done that, but.
So, yeah, so motion is to eliminate 1 through 15, plus the teen program from this year's budget, and that for the other items, to limit it to suspension of anything non-essential, which isn't in the, that is in the current order, but this is nice because it puts it as a, a clear council action, which includes the items and other. And that would be through the term of the order or beyond that, Melissa?
I, I think that, that for now, I'm going to just say through the term of the order because I'm going to leave staff to say what, what stays and what goes for later. So I'm, you know, so for me, that's, that's how I'm going to do it.
Okay. So then what I hear the action is, is motion to suspend from this year's budget or eliminate 1 through 15, plus the teen program, and that to keep the other items as suspended for the period that the city is under the city COVID emergency order?
Right. Unless, you know, the staff later decides to cut them in, you know, in their presentation. I'm fine with that later. But, but for now, that's what I want, what I want to move.
Great. We have a motion. Do we have a second? And if so, again, because I have multiple hands up, would you please second via chat? And Sylvia will acknowledge it, which will open it for discussion. Do we have a second?
Karen is the second.
Thank you. Councilmember Medicas, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. I seconded it to open it for discussion. And I just wanted to clarify on the other, are we saying we're closing the storage yard for the remainder of the order? And, and the other question I had was about dead animal removal. I think that might be a health and safety issue.
I would agree and ask if the maker of the motion will remove the dead animal removal as something that's essential to health and safety, and also to leave the storage yard up to the discretion of staff for the same reason, that for health and safety, that is an important item for some of our residents and for staff.
Yeah, I would, I would leave the storage yard off. I think Councilmember Medicas had a, had a suggestion of doing it every other week because of labor intensiveness or something like that. But I will certainly leave that up to staff's discretion in, in terms of, yeah, definitely leaving, leaving the storage yard open. Sure, sounds good to me.
And removal of dead, dead animals.
Dead animals. Yeah, health and safety. That has to stay.
Great. Great. Councilmember Medicas, well, you still have the floor. Was there anything else that you wanted to add?
No, those were the two items. And I, and I think the storage yard is pretty labor intensive, and it costs a lot on the dumpster, I believe. So I would like to see that maybe restricted to fewer times that that yard is open.
And I do appreciate what Carolyn has been doing since we've been under the city order, which is she's just been providing additional citywide notices so that residents know what the status is. And I would add to that, that we make sure to post it outside, and then also post it on the homepage of the website so that that information is as accessible as possible to residents.
And then the only other question I had on the community garden, if that's managed by nonprofit, are people still working in that garden?
So for now, the community garden is closed as part of the city, city order. Once we remove the city order, it would be open. However, part of tonight's eliminations, it's not much money. I believe it's maybe $1,700. That has now been removed from the remainder of this year's budget, which means it would be up to the residents to do the financial support for the garden.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellett, and then Rosen Garden, and then I will move to the residents who want to speak. Councilmember Ellett, you have the floor?
Yes, just a comment initially and then clarification. So on number, item number 13, which is Business Networking Luncheon, and by the way, I'm in general agreement with what's been proposed so far. Let me just clarify that, and let's look at it in a little different light. There's two elements to that. One was a very focused group with major stakeholders that was going to be a very low budget, you know, kind of a donut and coffee to be held in the, in the police, the police room there. That would move, I think, based on the scenario, to a, a video, an online meeting with the major stakeholders, which would be at absolute minimum cost. I would suggest we keep that path as we go into a recovery phase, and as we plan, as Councilmember Medicas pointed out earlier, we're going to need a strategy. We're going to need as much input on that strategy as we can. I believe that's of minimum cost. The other part of it was a much broader group of people, which would, yes, be solicitation of input, but would also be a luncheon. I think I would cut that one, but I would definitely keep a stakeholder feedback session roundtable. And obviously, you know, with the situation we have right now, that would move to a virtual meeting. But I, I would say that's an essential path as we have a strategy going forward. That would be my comment there. And then.
Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Ellett, can you clarify, which item are you talking about on these two lists?
I believe it's number 13.
The Business Network Luncheon. Sylvia, is that included? I do believe that we already cut that as part of Councilmember Ellett's motion earlier this evening, which is the business outreach for either $30,000 or $40,000. Does it fall under that, Sylvia?
Yes, that's, that's one in the.
So, yeah, Councilmember Ellett, that's already been cut this evening. So that would be something that CED, if they decide that that is essential, an essential need as part of our recovery plan, that would be something that would have to come back to council for approval later.
I, I agree. I just wanted to make sure the definitions there was my point, number one. And number two, let me make sure I understand the proposal as it stands. We would eliminate 1 through 15, plus the summer youth program. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Rosen Garden, you have the floor?
I would suspend more items under other. For instance, soil delivery, mowing of residential right-of-way, residential requests, residential landscaping consultation, trailer usage, bulk item pickup.
Rudy, the way that the motion stands right now, everything on that list is suspended through the term of the city order, except for wildlife assistance, dead animal removal, and storage yard, which is going to have, will be up to staff discretion as to when it is open and available. Everything else on the list is included in the motion.
Is included as suspension because I just heard Councilmember Ellett say 1 through 15, plus summer youth program, and not everything is suspended. One of them I will put in my two cents for is the ditch maintenance, because in the meadows, we have some residents, not me, who have some very steep ditches that are dangerous for them to mow.
Great. So then I would hear that as a friendly amendment from Councilmember Rosen Garden to pull ditch and ROW maintenance out. Would the maker and the second support that friendly amendment, which I believe is Councilmember Medicas and Councilmember Gonzalez? You're both unmuted. Would you accept that friendly amendment?
I'm going to leave that to staff for, for what is health and safety, because, I mean, I, I think there's a fairly large, well, we already contractually obligated for that mowing anyway?
That would be covered out of the drainage funds.
Okay. Yeah, well, then that's fine, because it's, we can't really do anything about it. So yeah, sure. I'm all right with that. It's not going to save us money.
The maker accepts that, does the second?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosen Garden, does that address your concerns?
Yes, but only those who have very steep ditches. The rest of us can mow our own right-of-way.
Council, sorry, Nikki Powers, you are the first resident, and you have the floor. It looks like you're self-muted.
Okay.
There you go. I can hear you now.
All right. I'm a little bit unclear. I wanted to go back to the residential right-of-way mowings. If our contract with the landscape company, you say that we still will have residential right-of-way mowings, or only in those places, but it's danger, okay, because it says mowing of residential right-of-way on the other list. So I'm not sure whether that's canceled or not canceled.
So on the first list.
Mowing of residential right-of-way, Mayor.
Oh, so yes. Mickey, that has been pulled. So that, there are three items from that other list that have been removed from the motion. That is one of them.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any additional comments from the public? Mark Wells, you have the floor?
Hello. Could somebody please quantify what, what is meant by the soil delivery? What type of soil was that? Maybe, maybe, maybe somebody had spoken to that, but I missed that. Could, could somebody please explain what that is, the soil delivery?
Carolyn, I'll let you jump into that.
Carolyn, could you please answer what soil delivery is?
Yes, we have, every once in a while, we'll have just some fill soil there, and some residents have asked for us to drop off, and it's no cost really for the soil, if they have low spots or something like that, that they're trying to fill in some low spots on their lawn.
Thank you, Carolyn. Mark? Mark, Mark, you have the floor. Did you want to ask another question?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hello. No, I was, I was, I was, I didn't know if that was perhaps gardening soil. So that's why I was concerned. So I figured if, if somebody needed some gardening soil, I would think that that would be fairly important, you know, especially now. So if somebody wanted to do their own garden, or actually encouraging gardening, I didn't know if we had some sort of pro-mix soil or something like that, that the city was, that the city had before, I'm sorry, that the city has ever had. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to make that distinction.
No. So that would be, anything that falls under that right now would be deemed non-essential and not something that staff is doing, especially during the period while we're still under the emergency order.
Okay, thanks.
Do we have any additional residents who'd like to speak, or any additional council members? And if I don't see any hands go up, I will call for the vote on this item. Dr. Browning, you have the floor?
Yes, I would like to ask about the mulch delivery. I think that's an important thing to keep up. It only takes one person to deliver it in a short time, and it helps conserve water, and it helps save the, the plants, so, and the trees that we plant. So I, I think it's a positive thing with a little bit of expense. And I wonder what you're going to do with all that that keeps piling up if you don't deliver.
And I will allow, if the maker of the motion or the second wants to amend their motion to remove that and deem it an essential service that continues, if maker and or second would raise your hand. And if I don't see any hands go up, I will call for the vote. Liz, I saw your hand go up, and then it went back down. Please, if you are wanting to speak, if you, okay. Liz Wright, you have the floor? Unmute yourself.
Okay, I apologize. I was kind of amazed to see some of these things on the other list, like the soil delivery, the landscape consultant, and the residential request, which I think I, I probably am two or three of those, which was a one-time thing in 20 years. Anyway, I was just kind of amazed to see that some of these were on there. What is that, what's a natural waterways, by the way? What is the, what's a natural waterways, by the way?
Natural waterways. Sylvia, can you answer that question? And if not, we can hand it over to Carolyn.
Anything that's not a stated ditch. We have a, a lot of areas that carry water, not necessarily identified as a ditch or maintained as a, as a ditch would be maintained.
Don't you think, don't you think it's important that we still maintain anything? That if it's holding water, if that's what I'm understanding, that we still need to take care of that. If it's going to rain again for the next four days, don't we want to make sure that those waterways are clear?
And some of that's going to fall under health and safety.
Okay. Well, that's not clear here.
So the other category is not the same, so the motion that's on the table right now is to remove the top items from the budget, period. The bottom is to keep them as non-essential during the period of the city order, which right now, we perceive that as being through the end of June. What would trump that would be if there was a health or safety need. But the between now and June, we continue under the current protocol, which is to have staff doing things that are truly deemed essential or that relate to health and safety. And so that's what would apply to the items that are in the other category. It's not an elimination from the budget. It's just a suspension for the period of the emergency order and that it would be addressed more specifically after the order is lifted.
Let me amend what I said under the residential request. One of those was mine, not three. Thank you.
Welcome. We're going to take two more comments and then we will call for the vote from council. Mickey Powers, you have the floor.
Yes, under the mulch delivery cancellation, I, I would hope they might let people back up their pickup truck and, you know, put, put some in up until the point that we don't have any mulch left, since we won't be doing a lot of chipping. But that they might at least allow residents to come up and get some if they wish on their own time with their own equipment.
So, so right now, we're limiting that as much as possible, which is less about the mulch backing up or the need from the residents. And it's more about protecting our staff, which again, that's just through the period of the emergency order, which is to really limit the contact that employees have with residents. But I think the overarching answer to that would be if it's a health and safety issue, then yes, residents would be able to contact City Hall and make an appointment. But it would have to be deemed a health and safety need.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Dr. Browning, you are our last speaker this evening.
No, I, I just failed to stop it.
Where are your hand? Okay. Councilmembers, all those in favor, please say aye, yea or yes via chat. Those not in favor, say no. And Sylvia, when you have the vote, if you would please read it back to the room.
I have Councilmember Rosen Garden, aye. Councilmember Reed, aye. Councilmember Gonzalez, aye. Councilmember Medicus, aye. Councilmember Elliott, aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Could a, Councilmember Rosen Garden, you have the floor. Did you hear me? No, we did not.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn and it looks like we have a second from Councilmember Gonzalez. Is that a second for me, Councilmember Gonzalez? All those in favor, please say aye. And if it's unanimous, Sylvia, if you would just please say that it's unanimous.
Unanimous.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn with a unanimous vote. We are now adjourned at 9:23. Thank you.